Good evening, Kershaw County. Good evening, Kershaw County. This is our first regularly scheduled meeting for the month of November. November 14th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. We're going to get the meeting started. All right, first on our agenda tonight is the invocation. Chair, would you mind opening up some prayer?
Sure. If we could stand for the prayer and the pledge.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Reverend. I didn't even see you. If everyone can please have their seats.
Let us pray. Gracious and Almighty God, we come before your divine present as humble as we know how. Lord, we thank you for the creation of this beautiful day. And we thank you that you have allowed us to gather in this place. We thank you for our elected officials of county council for Kershaw County. We thank you for the citizens. We thank you for the works that they have done and the work they are planning to do. We ask your blessing that you would grace us with your spirit and your wisdom from all heart. And all that we do may not only bring glory to thy name, but will continue to build the beloved community in Kershaw County. We pray this prayer in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, next item is adoption of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion concerning this agenda tonight?
Chair, I make a motion that we adopt tonight's agenda.
Okay, motion to adopt by Mr. Tomlinson. Is there a second? Okay, second by Mr. Cato.
Matt.
Discussion.
Chair, I would like to move that we adopt the agenda as modified as follows. To remove Item 17, the executive session for personnel matter. Councilman Tucker has had a work emergency and is unable to be here. That personnel matter would benefit from all council members present, I believe.
I agree, thank you. So, motion to make an amendment to strike 17. Is there a second?
There's a.
Okay, second by Mr. Brazel. And any discussion on striking that matter? Thank you for doing that, I agree. He needs to be here for that. Okay, all those in favor of the amendment to strike number 17 on tonight's agenda indicate by raising your hand. And vote is unanimous. And now to the rest of the agenda. Any other discussion or amendments? Okay, all those in favor of approving tonight's agenda as amended indicate by raising your hand. And the vote is unanimous, this agenda is passed. All right, next item is proclamations. We have one proclamation tonight. All right, proclamation recognizing November as Community Giving Month. Whereas, Kershaw County is a community blessed with numerous churches, charitable organizations, and generous individuals who give so much back to the people of Kershaw County. Whereas, Community Giving Month highlights Kershaw County citizens at their best by acknowledging the generosity and volunteerism that unites people of all ideologies. Whereas, Community Giving Month celebrates donors, volunteers, corporations, foundations, and organizations who financially invest in the local challenges before us. Whereas, Community Giving Month highlights civic responsibility, the spirit of service, and a sense of community that connects us all and transcends political ideology. Now, therefore, let it be known that the county council of Kershaw County, South Carolina, proclaims the month of November as Community Giving Month and encourages the donors, volunteers, corporations, foundations, and organizations throughout Kershaw County to commemorate this month by sharing their time and resources with those in need throughout Kershaw County. Presented this 14th day of November 2023 in Kershaw County, South Carolina. Is there a motion to accept this proclamation at this time?
I make a motion, Chair.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Schumake. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Jones.
Second.
And any discussion about tonight's proclamation? Mr. Schumake, you have the floor.
Blanketing Families, I believe, Ms. Annette, I think I see you out there. Saw you out there somewhere. And Blanketing Families is an organization that does a lot. They have a community garden in Elgin. They do a food giveaway. I got to meet these ladies because I was actually driving through Elgin and saw a bunch of cars lined up near Town Hall. And so I got out and saw what they were doing and they let me help give out food. They even had a double XL vest that barely fit, but it fit. So, I was able to squeeze into one of those. And through Ms. Annette, I got to also know some folks with a kind of a large organization that's called 4WW, 4 West Watery. They're also in the crowd tonight. 4 West Watery is sort of a, almost like a co-op of nonprofits that's put together in the West Watery area. And they meet, unfortunately, they meet the same time we meet because I haven't been able to get to a meeting, but the second Tuesday of every month. And what they do is basically bring all these nonprofits together and sort of fill in gaps. And so, I've talked several times up here about the big school giveaway they did in Potter's Park, and a lot of events like that. And as we head into the Thanksgiving season, there's numerous events on the horizon. And so, the 4 West Watery gets together and really does a great deal for the community. So, this proclamation recognizes all the charities in Kershaw County, but I'd like to give a shout out to those two because, two I've worked with extensively. And again, the Blanketing Families are the ones that put this on the radar. And so again, this just highlights November as Community Giving Month and encourages our friends and neighbors to keep doing that. We have various disagreements at times up here, but I think we can all agree that, you know, we should do everything we can to help those that are in need in this county. So, if, assuming this proclamation passes, I'd like to invite the members of 4 West Watery and Blanketing Families up for a photograph if we could.
Yes, absolutely. Any other comments?
I'm glad to be able to second this with you, Mr. Schumake.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll go for a vote. All those in favor of this proclamation recognizing November as Community Giving Month in Kershaw County indicate by raising your hand. All right, and this proclamation passes unanimously. If you're here from Blanketing Families or 4WW, can you please come forward?
We'll stand back here.
Big end.
Two, three, one, two, three. All right, thank you, Mr. Schumake, for putting that on the agenda, and everybody that came to support it. All right, next item is public comments. Mr. DeBose, do you have the public comment sheet? All right, public comment guidelines. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to share information with council. It is not a time for debate with or questions for answers from council. It is a time for council to receive input. It is not a time for council response. In short, during public comments, council will listen to public comments and not comment on the public comment. Offensive and inappropriate comments will not be tolerated, and anyone at any time can call a point of order if they believe that rule is violated. If a group would like to speak to council, we request that a spokesperson be selected and that this person indicate which group he or she is representing on the sign-up sheet. Public comment is a time to discuss issues. Public comment period is limited to five minutes maximum allowed per individual speaker, and we will have a timer up on the screens for you. Public comment to council as an agenda item shall continue uninterrupted and be livestreamed by audio and video where available until the agenda item is concluded. And first up tonight is Mr. Tom Webb III. Mr. Webb? Good evening.
Well, about international codes, we're entangled in them, and I don't like them. Careful what you, careful that you don't get something you can't get rid of. Klaus Schwab says no private property anywhere by 2030. His World Economic Forum is composed of big shots, and they ain't kidding. So how will it be done? Something international, I suppose, perhaps by creeping codes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Webb, I was making sure the timer got started. Please proceed, we'll start at five minutes.
Or by weaponizing food, starvation would work. Or by weaponizing food, starvation would work. So now we have more people to feed when all goes wrong. Stop the developments. Stop them, stop them.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. The next speaker tonight is Ms. Amy Kinnard. I'm sorry, Amy Kinnard.
That's okay. I'll answer to most anything.
How are you doing?
Good, good evening, Councilwoman Gwen and county council members. You all know me as Amy Kinnard, the Executive Director of the Kershaw County Chamber. But I'm actually here tonight as a representative of the Vehicle Access Network Committee. Back in 2017, when the first community health improvement plan was developed and published by key stakeholders in our community and facilitated by Livwell Kershaw, I had the opportunity to be a part of one of the core teams that was developed called Access to Care. Our goal was to increase and improve ways to access affordable healthcare and transportation services among rural and underserved Kershaw County residents. Our work on the transportation piece was hindered in many ways. But as time progressed, we found an opportunity for implementation through a partnership with the United Way of Kershaw County. And ultimately, they made our dreams of providing transportation for essential services a reality. Donnie, I know, is on the agenda, and he'll share some more details about this particular transportation work in the public presentation portion of the meeting. However, I wanted to share with you my excitement about something that we talked about for so long and had so many challenges trying to figure out how to do. It's finally here, and it's working. One of the best results is that we now see the overwhelming need from residents across our county who are taking advantage of this transportation option. And specifically, I'd like to introduce some of the individuals tonight that use the van or vehicle access network transportation option. And I'm going to ask that I stand as I call their name. So y'all don't be shy. From Camden with us tonight is Melanie Barnes. From Lugoff, we have Joyce and Turner DeVoy. From Elgin, we have Jim Donahue and Marva Smith. From Bethune, we have Marion Stokes. From Cassett, we have John Wall and Eddie Chestnut. And from the Kershaw portion of Kershaw County, we have Patricia Chappelle and Richard Baker. Again, all of these individuals and many more have used the public transportation option provided by the United Way. So I want to thank you in advance for listening and learning more tonight about the great need and current status of this program. It is invaluable to so many that I hope you will support its future sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. The next speaker tonight is Jim Donahue. Hi, Jim.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jim Donahue. I am speaking on behalf of the rider access.
Mr. Donahue, move the, it's flexible, just move it closer to your mouth, thank you.
I'm speaking on behalf of the One Carolina Transit, which is part of the rider access that was just being talked about. I am handicapped temporarily. I wound up having my foot amputated less than a month and a half ago. Because of the medications I'm on, I am unable to drive. And these wonderful people who are running the rider transport for the county have actually made it possible for me to still be alive. Because of the way my foot was amputated, I have a very high chance of infection. I have to go to the doctors two to three times a week. And these folks get me to those appointments. The dressing needs to be changed by a certified nurse. I'm using what's called a wound vac. Without the, without One Carolina Transport, I'll be honest, I'd probably be dead right now from infection. They serve a great and really necessary public service. I mean, if anything else needs to be said about them, I don't know what I could say. They are friendly, they're there, they try to do their best for everyone. I have not had one bad experience with them in the month and a half that I've been using them. So I just want to say thank you for supporting them, and I hope you can continue supporting them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Becky Yarborough. Hi, Becky.
I'm so happy to be here tonight. I am Becky Yarborough from the Community Medical Clinic. We are, we are a small and mighty piece of what goes on in this county. But we couldn't do what we do and participate in the healthcare of our patients, the underinsured, the underserved. We couldn't do what we do in saving lives if it weren't for United Way Van. I can't say enough, Mr. Donahue, you defined it. I cannot say enough. I could list and go on and more and more about the timeliness that the van network has been able to pick up our patients. They get them to appointments in Charleston, in Sumter, in Columbia, in Florence. They get them on time, every time. They pick them back up and they bring them home. I don't worry about my patients getting there. It is actually a personal reflection on me. When I set up an appointment and beg for somebody to see our patients without insurance, can you please help me? And they do, and our patients can't get there. But, but since this has started, since this system has been in place, y'all, I'm a cellphone person. Since, since this system has been in place, I've never had an opportunity or never had a missed opportunity to get my patients where they need to be. And we are all very, very grateful. I'm sure my cellphone is on your piece of paper there. But, but I could go on and on and on and brag about the work we do, brag about the work that they do, and I'm so grateful, I'm so grateful. It, it's, it does take a village. It does take a village, and our neighborhood, and our village right there amongst us, connect the dots for people that can't do it. Oh, my timer. They can't do it alone, and we are there for them. So, thank you very much, I appreciate giving me this time.
Thank you. Excuse me. Our next speaker is Jeff Maddox. Hi, Jeff.
Hello, welcome back, it's been a while. Recently, there have been some things that have happened. And I sent all of you guys and Madam Chair an email that I'd like to read into the public record. It's kind of concerning. When the people elect a person to office, they place trust in them to uphold the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. In fact, every elected official swears an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic. The public trust is sacred in a republican form of government. It is the social contract foundation upon which government by and for the people rests. To violate the contract is in fact a breach of trust and disqualifies the elected official from holding that trust. Madam Chair, has indeed violated the first of the.
Point of order. Point of order. That was one constituent.
Mr. Maddox.
Special. They are not allowed to speak. Thus.
Mr. Maddox.
Free the people. The people.
Mr. Maddox, please pause in your speech so we can address the point of order.
Presented in a short video.
Mr. Maddox, we have a point of order. Meeting, all right. Deputies, can you please whisper him out? Mr. Maddox, you need to leave the meeting.
For you, which requires you, under oath, that you defend the right of the free speech.
Just let them finish their, their argument that they've got.
I have no right to free speech here.
Certainly do, but you understand they're trying to.
And I'm reading this into the record. Yes, of course.
We have rules to follow, and the rules are going to be followed.
Mr. Maddox, you are addressing county council, and you are at our meeting. This is not the street corner, okay? So we have rules, you have to abide by them. Mr. Jones had a point of order first. Mr. Jones, what's your point of order?
Point of order. Do you count on me to personally attack an individual? But here, here are where there's our staff. Simple as that, and I think Mr. Brazel called a point of order.
Mr. Brazel, what's your point of order?
My point of order is that we should conduct ourselves with dignity. We should not call names, and we should not attack people.
I agree. Mr. Maddox, do not use any more names in the rest of your speech, please.
I disagree with that. This is not an attack, this is a statement of fact.
Mr. Maddox, so you can speak to me? The ruling was not to use names. I didn't say anything about the content of your speech. Do not use any more names.
The time to.
Reset the time to three minutes.
The evidence at this can be viewed at a recent video that I sent to y'all. The facts are clear and have now been placed before you, which requires, under your oath, that you defend the right of free speech against enemies, foreign and domestic. I hereby, I hereby demand that you honor your oath and condemn the blocking. Mr. DeBeau speaks for the county, not the people, though. And so I gotta ask, if the county's opinion is for free speech or for censorship, what's it gonna be? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maddox. That concludes the public comment portions of our meeting tonight. Thank you for everybody who signed up. All right, the next item on the agenda are public presentations. Our first presentation tonight will be Donnie Suppley with the United Way of Kershaw County Ventures and Progress. Thank you, Donnie, for being here tonight. And everyone should have a United Way folder at their desk.
Madam Chair, county councilmen, visitors and guests, and especially those riders that.
Mr. Maddox.
Those riders that are here tonight, my board members and staff who are here tonight, I truly appreciate their support for our request. Mr. Schumake, I would like to thank you for the proclamation that recognized Blanketing Families, and I thank you that one of my board members, who is a mayor, is also here. And actually, two mayors are here that are both on my board, so thank you both for your attendance. We have other board members and staff as well. But I just want to say thank you for headlining Community Giving Month. And to that, I would say, in 1992, when I started, we raised $300,000. This past year, our budget has increased to a total of $3 million. The challenge there is the match. The more money we raise through grants and foundations and whatnot, the more the match goes up. And so we've got a challenge to put before you tonight. First, I'd like to say, I had a board chair. His name was Paul Little, he was the plant manager at Invista. He shared with me one time when I apologized for contacting him because he was also my board chair. And he said, never apologize, the work that United Way does is important. Tonight, you've got a lot of important things before you. You've got some multimillion dollar decisions to make. My request is much smaller than that, but not any less important. To serve the people of our community, the folks that are here, both with services and with public transportation, to get to those services vital. So our request is two things tonight. One is to support the extension of a 25-year lease that we've had. We had a 15-year lease, then a 10-year lease, and our lease is going to come up June of '24 for another stage. And so we'd like to request an extension of 10 years to that request. What you do is you provide for housing, the housing of DSS and Health and Human Services in our community. It's a thing that statewide counties have a responsibility to do. And thankfully, you've partnered with us because both through the partnership, the Holston Center is able to provide a one-stop shop for social services that is a community-wide emphasis and a community-wide help to everyone who needs help because they can come to one place and get help. The second thing we're requesting is matching funds to help support our public transportation, the van, the Vehicle Access Network. We are now the major provider of transportation in our community. We do it in a different way than a lot of folks see. And we've made it happen in Kershaw County in a rural community that few communities have ever been able to do. We've been recognized for that by several different communities. Most recently, folks from Charleston, who also serve Berkeley County and Dorchester County, and folks from Hilton Head, who also serve Buford and many other smaller communities, have come to visit to see the things that we're doing. So it's really a pretty cool concept, and it's worked for many years. Like I said, 25 years ago, in 1998, you decided that you would partner with us. There are people on council that are new, and some of you I don't know real well. There are some like Sammy Tucker, and I can't even pick on a short person today because he's not here. But Sammy and I go way back, and Jimmy Jones also, who I get calls from folks to say, my constituent has this particular need. I think they can very well testify to the fact that when there's a need, that it comes up, we will address it. We'll do it in one of several ways. One is, we have all these services in our, in our one-stop shop, and you can see what those are on your handout. We have the medical clinic, of course, who was here represented. We have Food for the Soul. We have many other agencies, including the anchor tenant, which is yourselves, DSS, and Health and Human Services. We provide direct service, we also fund particular agencies. In fact, many of the agencies that you fund, that I saw in your list in county council that you're funding, we fund as well. Mental Health Association, Food for the Soul, others that we work with directly and partner with. We also have partners in our community, whether it's business, community, schools, churches. We work with everybody in the community to make sure that a difference is made, not United Way of Camden, but United Way of Kershaw County. And so that's where the ask is. We've got two things we want to ask for. That first, like I said, has to do with being right here, right now, having to do with services. The next request that we're going to talk about in a second is going to be access to services. But I'd like to ask Chris, my board chair, to come forward and talk a little bit about both.
Thank you, council, councilwoman, council for being here tonight. I just want to thank you again for the privilege to be here. We respectfully ask for council's support for an extension of a 10-year lease. This partnership has been a cornerstone of our community services and offering of resources for a unified hub of essential state-level services like Department of Social Services, Health and Human Services. These services would typically require county contracts, and we absorb that as the United Way to take that off of your table. By affirming the lease, county council will not only alleviate its own administrative burdens, but also continue its commendable legacy of serving the citizens of Kershaw County. This decision is more than just about logistical convenience. It symbolizes our shared commitment to serve our people in Kershaw County. And I'm relatively new. Military brought me here, retired from Sharif for space, but I've been living here since 2020 and have come to low and love this area as my county, my town, my region. So we like to extend our deepest gratitude for your thoughtful consideration for this matter of extending the 10-year lease. I now would like to turn it over to Ms. Sally.
Chris, thank you for your service, and happy Veterans Day.
Good evening. It is a pleasure to be with you all tonight. My name is Sally Harold. I'm the executive director for the Health Services District of Kershaw County, and I am, like I said, thrilled to be here to share with you some comments about an issue that Donnie and Chris have both raised tonight, and is an issue that the Health Services District has felt very passionately about for a long time and have supported both financially and in advisory capacity. So back in 2016, the Health Services District coordinated and funded the first Kershaw County Community Health Needs Assessment, which ultimately became the first Community Health Improvement Plan, or CHIP. This particular needs assessment used focus group data and population health data to identify key health needs and issues in our community through this data collection and analysis. Once the community data was analyzed in 2016, one of the top barriers that was shown to be a barrier in healthcare in our community was transportation. That was transportation to work, grocery stores, physicians' practices, specialty providers, et cetera. So the district actually took this information and tailored their grants process and requirements to focus on several key areas, one of which was public transportation, and this was in the hopes that we would be able to fulfill a gap that was shown in the community. So another important component of the needs assessment is that it actually focuses on the capabilities in the community, including the existing citizens, agencies, and organizations who are already playing these key roles to help fulfill the gaps in the community. So the United Way approached the Health Services District about a possible partnership to address public transportation, and the district agreed with the proposal that was presented. The United Way has consistently risen to the occasion to find and offer a solution to the lack of transportation in our community. And over the past three years, the Health Services District of Kershaw County has been proud to provide a financial support in the amount of $292,000 to the United Way's Public Transportation Initiative. Our financial support is yearly and is due to begin in May of 2024, but based on the data, we've seen this is money well spent. Our community is getting healthier, and the ridership is increasing. We're confident that this financial support has played a large part in making the United Way Kershaw County's primary transportation provider a reality. Now, the challenge is to, the challenge is to secure additional funding to sustain their already great work. Again, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Sally.
Couple of things you should know. One is which some folks qualify for Medicaid, and they get free transportation through Medicaid, and those, those services are provided. That's not what we do. When folks call us, we screen them, and we find out whether they are available to, to have other services provided to them in another way. So we only fill the gap, but that gap is a big one. I've got some statistics I want to share with you, but before that, I do want to say that there are a few other things to, to, to address. One is that in 1998, when we decided to move from 632 to Calve Street to 110 East of Calve Street, we were asked a question by John Lee, then a councilman, and John asked the question, and he served this downtown district, how are people going to access services all the way down there? Not to mention Bethune, Cassett, Elgin, all of those other areas throughout the county, but that's when our venture in transportation began. We contracted then with the RTA in Sumter, and we were able to have a dollar a ride for services on 521 and Highway 1 that they were able to provide at that time. Later, because of some government red tape, they were, they had to drop that, so we didn't have that Medicaid waiver anymore. So for about the past 20 years, we've been looking at solutions. We actually applied several times to the Health District, and were not able to be funded because the plan wasn't totally in place. In partnership with Live Well, we were able to come together with access to care, and we were able to come up with something that really does work. And that avenue is this. What we do, we applied to the RTA for funding. So the first two years, we actually received funding only from the Health District. In those two years, we were able to build a track record of success. In those two years, we also were able to build some partnerships with the Santee Water Re RTA. They had some funding. They did a, a fixed route system throughout Kershaw County that ended up not being very successful, because people just didn't ride it. It wasn't timely for them as they needed. So our routes are door-to-door. We pick people up at their house. We take them to their appointment. We come and pick them up. We do the screening, and so we have staff that are here tonight from our United Way that do the screening. People call, like I said, first they're screened to see whether or not they can get other services. Next, we find out when they need the ride. Next, we schedule it with two subcontractors. So we don't actually have vehicles. We subcontract. The RTA screens those subcontractors to make sure that they have the proper insurance, training, all of those things that are important to be able to provide safe and reliable transportation. We monitor, monitor that, and so one of our other roles is to be an advocate for those folks who ride our vehicles, so that when they, when they ride, they are not left to, to just wait and wait and wait. And that's the great thing about door-to-doors, that we're able to treat each individual as an individual. So the $100,000, there's some, some statistics that are out there, but those statistics tell part of the story. You've got them in your packet. Our service days are primarily Monday through Friday. We do some Saturday work as well. Our average rides are 100 a day. So right now, we're serving over 100 folks a day with transportation. Passenger trips so far this year, which are out of 11 months, are around 20,000. Most of our riders are ambulatory, but some, as we, as we see, are not, and so we have handicap access vehicles as well. Our average unduplicated, excuse me, our unduplicated riders are 504 folks throughout our community who would not be able to get to where they go without us. One of the statistics that is often shared in health is that your ZIP code defines how healthy you likely are because of access to services. Because of the fact that we're able to provide transportation to these folks, no longer does a ZIP code need to define somebody's health status. Additionally, of course, we take people other places, but you can see, medical transportation is almost half of what we do. That's appropriate, because the Health District is funding us, so that's a good thing. You can see also, as I close, that we have a deficit, and that deficit is because of the match. For every rural transportation route we do, we have to pay 50%. The urban routes right now are fully funded, 100%. All of our rural routes are 50% us and 50% RTA. We need your help, and we hope you can help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Donnie.
Madam Chair, may I ask Mr. Suplee a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Quick question. There was mentioned, I believe it was Ms. Becky Yarber earlier, mentioned a lot of the routes are to Charleston, Sumter, outside of Kershaw County. What is the percentage of routes that you are driving in transportation that is picking up in Kershaw County, delivering in Kershaw County compared to picking up in Kershaw County, taking outside of Kershaw County? Is there, and I know that you probably can't give an accurate description of that.
There's a specific number, and I can give it to you. I just can't give it to you right now, but what I can say is that five routes a day are out of county, up to 10 sometimes.
Out of the 100, so that's a very small percentage.
Yeah, so it's a very small number. Now, it's expensive, because if you have to go to Charleston, they're only going to Charleston if that's their only outlet. We do, as we screen, we ask, is there a service in Kershaw County that can provide it? There's a lot of dialysis that we do out of county. There's a lot of cancer screenings and, and cancer assistance that we provide that's out of county. But yes, most, most definitely, most of it is in county, and I'll get you that specific figure.
Thank you so much, and I really appreciate all y'all do.
I have a comment.
Donnie, are you done with your presentation?
I have a comment for him. I just wanted to say, Donnie, over the years, 17 years, I have called you many, many times. There's been times, Donnie and I haven't been on the same page, but that's okay. He's always been there when I have called him. He's always been to help a citizen that was in need, and I just want to tell you, thank you so much. And I got another one to call you about tomorrow. But anyway.
I'll be there.
I wasn't setting you up for that, but thank, and you always are there. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I'll be brief as I wrap this up. You've heard compelling arguments from my distinguished colleagues and key stakeholders in our cherished community. We come before you with a united plea, seeking your crucial support in providing matching funds to sustain public transportation in our rural county. The comprehensive documentation you have in your packets illustrates our commitment to fiscal responsibility and transparency. Every dollar is accounted for, and there is, there are robust statistics to demonstrate the effectiveness of our initiatives. Public transportation, as you are well aware of, is not a convenience but a vital function of local government, directly impacting the lives and well-being of our residents. In my previous role as the Santee Lynch's Regional Council of Governments Executive Director, we conducted a similar study, and the same needs arose, there was a lack of transportation. And the annual fixed cost of traditional transportation service was estimated at $875,000 annual recurring. The way that Donnie and the team has come up with is a much smaller number than that, and is way more efficient. Years ago, council faced a challenging decision to withdraw funding from RTA. Today, we stand before you at a pivotal moment with an innovative solution that has already garnered the attention from Charleston and Hilton Head as an innovative approach to rural transportation. This is not about connecting, it's not about routes and vehicles, it's about connecting people to services and employment. United Way stepped outside the box. They really tried to find a way to meet the need of all the citizens from West Water Re to North Kershaw County to anywhere across our county. We humbly ask for your support and continue to have this endeavor for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Donnie or Chris's question, have you all thought of the impact on homelessness increasing in Kershaw County on this particular program?
It is part of this program. In fact, anybody that needs our transportation, so we do take people to, who are homeless to various things as well. But, but on a larger scale, we are working with homelessness with our group that's called the Kershaw County Housing Partnership, and we are specifically working with the, the city police as well as county police to talk about ways for us to address the situation. I have toured both the, the group that you had come at the last meeting in, in Florence, the House of Hope, and I've toured in Columbia, the, the, what are called pallet houses, but I learned that they're not pallets, that the company is called pallet, but they have 50 little teeny houses. In my mind, neither of those is exactly where we would like to go. We're working on scattered sites. We have a commitment from a local contractor to build 10 houses over the next 10 years, and so that's one of the ways that we're going to be addressing this. We, of course, have five current family shelters and one men's shelter, and we have just added another single-family home as well. So we are, we are looking much more at scattered site rather than congregate sites as far as serving homeless folks, and we are certainly addressing the fact that there is some concern about us being a magnet for homeless people, and I would blanketly say that we have rules, Food for the Soul has rules, other groups in our community have rules with regard to, we serve Kershaw County folks primarily.
Okay. And I don't want to get us off topic. I just wanted to know if there was an impact or a...
I'll be glad to come back.
Just real briefly, he is also working with the COG to address homelessness. That was the conversation starting.
As I said, I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay, so the transportation program and this lease, Mr. DeBeau, do you have a copy of the current lease?
It's in his packet, but I'll pause. I can certainly get one.
Right, so that's something we need to look at, and this for next, next budget cycle. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, United Way. Donnie, thank you for being here, and everybody that came with you and your team. The next presentation tonight will be Scott Adams. And Ryan, I think I can take, I can do the time on this. This is kind of distracting, so if you'll turn it off. Does he have a slideshow? Yes, I'd much rather have the slides up for, okay, thank you. Mr. Adams, hello. Thank you for being here.
Hello. Good evening, Madam Chair and Council. There you go. There's the slides. My name is Scott Adams. I am the General Counsel, Secretary, and Director of Sterlite Technologies, Inc., and with me is my colleague Shivam Goll, who is one of several of our employees who have relocated to this area in connection with the establishment of our Kershaw County Fiber Optics Manufacturing Plant, which we have named the Palmetto Plant. And you see in front of you a, a picture, it's not a recent picture, of the, the front of that facility. My principal reason for appearing tonight is frankly to thank the council, the administrator, and particularly Jeff Burgess and his world-class team for their support in helping us establish our North American headquarters in Kershaw County, assistance with recruiting and training our workforce, and assisting with introductions to area businesses, including the Chamber, and be assured that Sterlite wants to contribute as much to the local Kershaw County and South Carolina economy as we can. And I want to say that I have worked with a number of economic development professionals in many states throughout the last 30 years or so, and Jeff Burgess is truly world-class, and you've got a winner with him. I can't say enough about him and the work that he has done. If there is anybody who follows up with us, who is there when we need something, who wants to lend a hand, Jeff and his team are there, and I want to thank him specifically and recognize him to you. The next slide, if we could. On September 15th, Governor McMaster and Senator Augustusson, among others, helped us inaugurate our Palmetto Plant, which included approximately 100 guests, customers, suppliers, partners, media, and area business leaders. It was a great event. We had Chamber of Commerce weather, Amy, and it was truly a celebration of South Carolina, a celebration of America, and a celebration of Kershaw County. Next slide. About our facility, this 168,000-square-foot facility is located in the Heritage Point Business Park. It is equipped with the latest advancements in optical fiber production technology. It is, to sum up, the most modern fiber optics manufacturing plant in North America. It incorporates cutting-edge mechanical and environmental testing equipment, allows for stringent quality control. Additionally, the plant can, we can conduct 100% testing onsite, adhering to the industry standard GR20 guidelines, ensure consistency and reliability, and best-of-class quality of our product. As I told Governor McMaster at our launch, we do not intend to be number two to anyone in our industry. We want to make Kershaw County, South Carolina, and America proud of the products we manufacture in Kershaw County and the people here locally who make them. Good news. We have exceeded both our investment goal and our jobs-creation goal, and we intend to grow in the coming years and create additional jobs in photonics, materials, applications engineering, and many other disciplines that drive the next phase of our growth in North America. And we have exceeded these goals because of, among other things, Jeff Burgess, because of the business community, because of the many local citizens who have come out and have wanted to work for us and who are working for us, and students from our local technical college, and those who are interested in optical fiber technology, making everything from broadband to flying cars to you name it, optical fiber is where it is. We also pledge to contribute to the environmental quality of Kershaw County. We are committed to becoming net zero by 2030 and probably before. Already, we have implemented several initiatives to reduce waste and our ecological footprint. Zero-waste landfill, waste-to-energy, reduction targets for water and national gas consumption, water harvesting, and potentially solar initiatives on our roof are being considered. More good news. Finally, as you may know, the federal government has budgeted over $42 billion, billion with a B, dollars for broadband infrastructure starting next year. Of this, South Carolina will receive $551 million. Our neighboring states of North Carolina and Georgia will receive $1.5 billion and $1.3 billion respectively. Sterlite is positioned to compete and bring as much of this business as we can to Kershaw County. From coast to coast, products that will permit America to learn, explore, fly... From coast to coast, products that will permit America to learn, explore, fly, communicate, and connect will be made right here in Kershaw County. Really good news, the future is bright, we are, and I love this phrase, Kershaw committed, and again, thank you for your support and assistance as we launch this journey. Thank you very much. We do have some gifts for you, uh, you probably saw us bring them in, um, here, and Shivam is going to show you one of these. What this is, is fiber optics, uh...
Stephen, you can come in, you can come in here.
There's one, there's one for all of you.
Yeah.
And we make them cheap, so they're nominal value.
I want to tell you, I really appreciate your gift, but I don't think I can accept a gift, but I appreciate that.
And that's okay, I got it, and I do have to tell you, they're nominal value, uh, they're, they're well under $25, uh, so, but you can, uh, but anyway, fiber optics is essentially glass, all it is is glass, and that is the core component, that's the core component of a fiber optic cable, and what it is, is that is heated, and if it's frankly, it's upside down, it's heated and it continues to draw into very small fibers. The small fibers in our plant are put in, uh, a tube, or they're in a ribbon with various plastics around them, and, uh, light then transmits through the glass, and the quality of your fiber optic, uh, cable is the quality of the glass. Now, a lot of us, including my own home, still have copper, and, you know, that's kind of last generation, uh, everybody's wanting fiber. We have a wonderful company here, one of our customers, Truvista, uh, here in Kershaw County, and, uh, the world is wanting good quality fiber optics cable to get off the copper, uh, the copper footprint, and, uh, so we can have fast internet speeds, we can learn from home, we can work from home, uh, we can fly cars, as they say, uh, we can enhance our space program, everything works from fiber optic cables nowadays. So those are our gift to you, uh, you can keep them, you donate them, uh, if you like, but we just want you to know what it is we're doing, and we'd love to have you come out and visit with us, and, uh, you don't need an invitation, it's your, your facility, and, uh, we're just proud to be here, and thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, yes, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Adams, I want to thank you for being here, I'm totally impressed with our partnership here, you guys are doing a great job, and thank you for being here tonight and presenting this and kind of giving us some insight on what's going on, but, uh, thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
Did a great job.
And thank you, and again, we welcome you anytime to come visit with us, um, it were, we love doing business in Kershaw County, and again, we look forward to working with the Chamber and, uh, working with our business partners in the area, customers in the area, the nonprofit organizations in the area, United Way, and, uh, being a responsible citizen. So again, thank you, Madam Chair and Council.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake.
Yeah, so, uh, quick question, you mentioned it kind of briefly, but, so are you working with Central Carolina, and you talked about some of the community colleges, are you guys having any conversations about, you know, placement? I know they have a lot of programs over there for sort of applied work, um, that seems like it would transition well over to your establishment here.
The answer is yes, Councilman, uh, we are planning, as we speak, to have a job, and I call it a career fair, um, over at Central Carolina. We don't want these students to leave Kershaw County, and we have talked to the head of the technical...
We don't either.
It's an investment that you make in, in, uh, the, the college, and we, and we will as well, and we want these students, and they probably can't put enough of them through there, that we'll hire, uh, because there's a constant pipeline, if we're growing, we need more people, and like everybody else, we're looking for good quality people, and they're here in Kershaw County, and we're committed to helping educate them and train them and work with the community college, uh, to do internships, apprenticeships, uh, we want to try something called a Sterlite Scholars Program, where we're going to participate in helping them with tuition and with costs and giving them guaranteed, um, internships and jobs, so this is, uh, yeah, we're looking forward to that partnership as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and this is my first presentation from, um, a new company that has landed in Kershaw County, so thank you for choosing Kershaw County. Any other comments? Mr. Cato? Jeff Burgess, will you come join us up here, and, um, Siobhan and Mr. Adams, if you'll come in, please?
Sure, thank, thank you.
You hold this convention?
I'm gonna heat.
It's warm.
Oops. It's not starting.
Thank you.
Great.
Thanks so much.
I brought that out.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Hang tight, keep smiling, hold on. Thank you.
Do you live in Kershaw County?
I will.
You will?
I'm supporting your party.
I need to bless them on this end.
All right, thank you again for Sterlite, we're so happy to have you in Kershaw County. All right, that concludes the public presentations for tonight. We will move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Approval of Minutes for the Tuesday, October 24th Regular Minute, Regular Meeting.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes, um, from October the 24th, 2023.
Mr. Tomlinson makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Brazel, second, okay. Mr. Cato with a second. Any discussion on the minutes, any updates or changes, amendments that need to be made? Okay, with that, we'll go to a vote, this is approving the Tuesday, October 24th, 2023 regularly scheduled council meeting, all those in favor of approving the minutes indicate by raising your hand. Mr. Jones, Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. Cato, Mr. Schumake, and Mr. Brazel. Mr. Tucker is absent, and Ms. Hannah, I recuse myself for absence. Next item on the agenda is a discussion, equine development in Kershaw County, this was placed on the agenda by Councilman Schumake, so, Mr. Schumake, you have the floor to lead us in the discussion.
Sure, so, um, let me first begin by saying I'm not, uh, an equine person per se, I'm not a, uh, equestrian, uh, but I've been to a lot of events, my experience with horseback riding extends to my honeymoon, where they only had little horses and had to bring out a retired racehorse for me, who was extremely stubborn, um, and did not like me at all. That was my last experience on the back of a horse. Um, so, however, uh, obviously, the equine industry in this county is huge, and I got a chance with Councilman Brazel and Councilman Jones, uh, we had a chance to go down to Aiken and see some of what they're doing down there, has sort of an idea of, the fundamental big question for all of us, right, is how do we handle this, this growth that we're getting? You know, what, what do we do about it? What do we, where do we limit it, where do we encourage it, if we encourage it at all? And one area where I personally think we should be looking into is, you know, in much in the way we do economic development for businesses, reach out to some of these folks that are building, the equine folks, let me give you an example, down in Aiken, they have neighborhoods that are done completely by private developers, and they're enormous lots, they have huge polo fields, and it caters specifically to that industry. So if you have giant parcels of land that are going to sell, rather than, for example, place 700 homes, a better option might be to see if we can recruit one of these developers in to do fewer lots with this type of activity. So it, it's an interesting thought, we also have, uh, some land, as the council knows, we have some land by the lake, I don't know how suitable that would be to an equine park, but that's something where the county could sell that land to a developer and kind of, again, in an effort to promote this industry that sort of encourages, it'll encourage tourism without necessarily bringing in, you know, the starter homes. Uh, we went to an event just this past weekend, it's kind of the first annual by this group, um, at the polo fields, uh, polo matches, it's pretty well attended, even the weather was bad leading up to it, but pretty good weather the day of. So, again, I'm no expert in it, so I don't profess to be, there are a lot of people that are, that I've talked to, um, but I'd be curious to get Councilman Jones and Councilman Brazel's reaction, but I found that trip to Aiken really interesting because their equine industry is growing tremendously, I, I don't see that here, but I don't see a reason why we can't be a competitor in that space without really necessarily picking winners and losers in the market, but just opening ourselves up to those private companies and making sure they know that we are going to be, you know, a good place to do business. So just wanted to give an update on that, as kind of what we're thinking about is, you know, just one of the many things we're looking at, is how to, how to look at those industries that would fit here, that would fit well here, and sort of, you know, really add to the culture of the community as opposed to just, you know, another 500 starter homes. Councilman Brazel, you?
Yeah, I'd like to speak on it, so, um, I was in conversation, my father-in-law's, um, a horse guy, I'm not, uh, he, he and I chatted some after our trip, which was actually quite lovely, the, the town of Aiken, um, you can tell their downtown has benefited, benefited from all the equine industry and the, and the polo in particular, um, it was quite interesting, and we, we had a little polo event here Sunday, which was a lot of fun, I will say, um, it brought people from out of town, it, uh, it's something that was pretty common 10 or 12 years ago, I remember taking the kids, uh, on a Sunday afternoon to a polo event in, uh, in Camden several times, but, but bringing it, bringing something, whether it be polo or, or more horse racing, back into our community would be beneficial. Uh, my father-in-law and I were speaking, and he said that Aiken led South Carolina as, is the number one equine county and, and, and city, and then number two was Anderson County, and third was Kershaw County, and I think there was a time when we were probably in the lead, um, so, I, I would, I would look to find policies that would help, maybe with conservation easements in development, I know that that's something that we've currently done away with, is, uh, being able to develop a parcel of land and, and conserving part of it, maybe that's not, um, that wouldn't lend itself to development for homes, but I, I know there's a, a big talk of a parcel that's currently a horse facility that's potentially going to be 700 homes, I'd love to see something, um, a, a mixed-use development, maybe preserve a polo field, I think there's one on that parcel, I could be wrong, um, but if, if there was something that we could trade density for quality, um, and encourage developers to bring the right kind of development to Kershaw County, I think we'd all be winners, I think Kershaw County will win, I think our local businesses will win, our small businesses would, would win, um, people in the building industry, local builders would win, instead of these builders that, that bring everything in by, by railcar from foreign, foreign places that even, even overseas and in China, a lot of products are brought in for, for some of the, some of the lower-end construction, which is kind of sad, but, um, Aiken was wonderful, and, um, I'm open to conversations that would lend Kershaw County to, to move ahead in, in, in the equine industry. Thank you, sir.
If I could.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I do want to thank both my colleagues for going, I got a call, there was an invitation, really, really did not know why we were going to Aiken, um, until we got there, and I was, I was really pleasantly surprised, I, I liked the idea of planned development, you know, we talk about the housing, the housing, the housing, and, and I think they had five matches going on with polo at one time, and we, we went downtown to eat, by the way, we went on our gas, on our own dime, didn't wear nothing that the county gave us, we paid for it ourselves, and, want to make that clear.
We did get county tattoos while we were there, though.
But, listen, let me tell you something, I wasn't going to tell that, but, uh, but no, it was, it was, it was really, you know, it, I'm not into horses, okay, but this community is an animal community, whether it's dogs, cats, horses, or what, and I am all in for, you got to think outside the box, you got to look at other things, and, and that's what this is about, it was just sort of a brainstorming, um, uh, trip that we made, and I want to thank y'all for going, I said, I look forward to, let's just see what we can do, you know, hey, look, I was telling them, I'll give you an example, guys, so I don't want to shock you by, you know, the comment that was made coming back there, we have 120 acres of land sitting there doing nothing, and the comment is, well, who would go up there? I said, well, think about this, Las Vegas was built in a desert, and look who goes there, so, let's don't strike anything out, you know, we, you never know what we might can do if we put our minds to it when it comes to, with planned development, but thank you for going, I appreciate that, and I want to be very sincere to y'all about that, because I may not be as sincere on the next issues we got down the road on this agenda, but bottom line is, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and Madam Chair, let's see if we can't maybe start a conversation.
Okay.
I'd like to ask, yeah, they're going with Derek and...
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate you guys going down there and thinking outside the box, um, a question for Mr. Burgess, is he still here?
Yes.
In economic development, do we have any, um, developers contact us, or have we ever been in any contact with any planned developers in that kind of capacity?
As far as equine, no, at this point in time.
Okay, any other, not just equine, but other...
Some developers do want to speculate on purchasing property and possibly setting up industrial buildings.
Okay.
It's usually been the conversation all around our side.
Do you have contacts in Aiken?
I do, I have a good friend, the economic developer there, Will Williams, so definitely...
That was our intention to have you involved, make some phone calls, yeah, yeah.
Extra ideas.
So if you, since you now have that, I guess, that instruction from the chair, maybe you can go ahead and start putting some phone calls out there, some contacts.
I can reach out to Anderson.
You got one of the best thing right behind you at Amy County, Jean Wise always told me, the first place people go when they come to a county is the Chamber. Okay, so work together, guys, and see if we can get going.
She seems pretty nice, I think I can...
Thank you.
Thank you guys again for doing that, and, um, yeah, whatever ideas, however I can help, that's awesome. All right, any other discussion, questions for the gentleman that went?
I, I just feel left out that all the West Water Reef folks got invited to Aiken, we have a polo field here in Camden, so, up on the, the east side, or...
They didn't want to have a quorum, so, they couldn't tell us.
It's going to be the new center of equine in Kershaw County.
There you go, get your polo filled up.
All right, up to Agenda Item Number 10, ordinances. Right first ordinance this evening, this will be the first reading of a Fee in Lie of Taxes Ordinance for Project Tree. Authorizing pursuant to Title 12, Chapter 44 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976 as amended, the execution and delivery of a Fee in Lie of Advorium Taxes Agreement by and between Kershaw County, South Carolina, and Project Tree as sponsor, and one or more sponsor affiliates to provide a Fee in Lie of Advor, Ad, I'm so sorry, Florum Taxes, Incentive, and certain special source revenue credits for the benefit of a project in the county and other related matters. Is there a motion pertaining to this ordinance at this time?
Accepted.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Schumake, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Tomlinson, into discussion. Um, Mr. DeBose?
I just feel left out that all the West Water Reef folks got invited to Aiken. We have a polo field here in Camden, so off on the east side or.
They didn't want to have a quorum, so they couldn't tell us.
It's going to be the new center of equine industry in Kershaw County.
There you go. Get your polo filled up.
All right, up to agenda item number 10. Ordinances. Right first ordinance this evening. This will be the first reading of a fee in lieu of taxes ordinance for Project Tree. Authorizing pursuant to Title 12, Chapter 44 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976 as amended, the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad verum taxes agreement by and between Kershaw County, South Carolina, and Project Tree as sponsor and one or more sponsor affiliates to provide a fee in lieu of adveri- adv- I'm so sorry, velorem taxes, incentive, and certain special source revenue credits for the benefit of a project in the county and other related matters. Is there a motion pertaining to this ordinance at this time?
Accepted.
Motion made by Mr. Schumake, Sarah Second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Tomlinson into discussion. Mr. DeBose, if you'll give us a brief update and a brief overview of this.
Certainly. This filo ordinance proves a solar, well, is the first step in approval and first reading in approval of a filo for a solar project. This particular project, Project Tree, contemplates an $80 million investment. The payment structure would be 2,500 per megawatt hour, which equates on their projected output to $200,000 per year in ad verum tax revenue to the county. This is kind of pursuant to the generalized solar filo template that the county staff has pursued so that these solar projects are all treated more or less equally to reduce the negotiation required by council. And again, that $2,500, $2,500 per megawatt was what was landed on as a fair payment structure.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. DeBose, is this 200,000 a year for the lifetime of the project, or is it for a designated period of time, let's say 10 to 12 years? And then they will be the filo would go away, and they would pay the actual property tax value based upon without the filo?
No, it's a set structure pursuant to the term of the filo. If they actually exceed their output, though, there's a stepped increase in.
That would be a measured calculated algorithm?
Yeah, it's included in one of the exhibits to the agreement, but essentially, I believe if they hit certain production metrics, the payment per megawatt hour is either 3150 or 3250 per megawatt hour. So if it starts producing further energy.
But this will be for the lifetime of the project instead of a period of time designated? Another question.
There's a designated term to the fee.
Which would be, what is that?
I believe this one is a either 30 or a 40-year fee.
So for 40 years, it would be $200,000 a year?
Correct.
Okay. Another question, is this project, I believe we did a resolution on this, correct?
Correct.
Is this project now in the next phase of the steps, or we have they gotten their agreements with the purchase power agreement and everything else, or is that why we're taking the first step in these owning ordinance because we just did the resolution about a month and a half ago?
I understand that Tree is finalized or very close. The next ordinance for y'all's consideration, White Oak, I do believe has most of those steps completed. So I think these projects are both very far along, is my understanding correct. We spoke previously that some of these projects have a large gap sometimes between an inducement resolution and the project becoming a reality. These two projects are, I believe, are very close to the finish line, is my understanding. And I think Mr. Burgess could certainly provide insight to that as well. My understanding is they're both very close.
Okay. And maybe this may be a question for Mr. Burgess. I've worked on a few solar projects and fee in lues, and a lot of them don't go for the lifetime of the project as far as other counties are. And I think we we kind of maybe handcuff ourselves, and I know we've already done a resolution, but I would like to potentially look at, I know we have two other readings, but maybe observe other counties and let's see what we can do. So let's let's look at maybe 15-year filo agreements, and then we can have the filo would go away, and then we could look at the, you know, a regular kind of revenue for taxes at that point. We don't, when we provide filos to other companies, we provide them on a per-term basis, and it would be a year-to-year, you know, what is it, 10 to 12, 15-year? Is that correct, Mr. Templer?
Depending on depending on the company, but yes, they are timed.
But do we ever get somebody, somebody, someone for the lifetime of their presiding in Kershaw County in agreement?
Not to me.
So I would like to see us look into that and just observe other counties, what other counties are doing, because in my in my small time, kind of looking at those things, other counties do it a little bit differently, and I would like to see us not getting handcuffed. So I will be voting no on this first reading of this ordinance, just because of that. But thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. DeBose.
Yeah.
So the total value of the project being, how much was it again?
I believe the projected investment for Tree is 80 million.
So typically, a filo reduces, used to reduce the tax rate from 10 to 6%. Is that correct?
Correct.
And now we've seen some tax rates reduced from 6 to 4%. Is that correct?
Correct. I believe these are set at 6%.
Is that set at 6%?
I believe Tree is set at 6.
I feel like it would be less than that, but I could be wrong.
Well, it's set at 6. The millage is fixed, but it's got this, again, provision for payment by megawatt hour, which is allowable under the filo structure.
But it's a it's a set set amount at 200,000, correct?
Correct. That's the expected base payment based on their projected megawatt production. Correct.
I'd like a little more information from Mr. Burgess in a breakdown, and that might take a little more time than we have today, but okay, thank you.
And for to what Mr. Tomlinson was discussing on Charlie 26 is a little bit of a breakdown. If the output is greater than 96 megawatts, how the filo will increase. But what if they never make that?
My only concern is the is the lifetime of the filo. So a 40-year agreement for a filo is a long time.
Correct.
Odds are that output is only going to be for about 25 to 26, 27 years. If you're looking at average, maybe 33. A 40-year output on that is, that's a pretty high speculum.
Well, based on.
What if they, what if their output is zero? Are we still getting that 2,500 per megawatt at year 36?
What will happen in all likelihood, Newberry County has a similar agreement. It's 30 years out. Our filos don't generally run any less than 30 years that we've handed out in the past.
For solar.
Or industrial as well.
Okay.
Okay, so we have, it depends on the investment and what they're putting in. Based on what I've seen other counties do and where we've based ours, the 30 to 40 year is not an outlier. It's Clarendon does it as well as Newberry. Newberry did one in 2022.
How many solar projects do they have in Clarendon, Newberry County? Because I know that Orangeburg has a lot. I just drove through Darlington County. They have a good bit. I didn't see any in Clarendon when I was there.
They have, they had one announced. I don't know where it's at in stages. The state of South Carolina has over 30,000 solar installations. Lexington and Richland, between the two of them, have 3,000 at this point, so.
What about all the other counties? Can we get an out? Can, and I'm asking, I'm sorry to bring this up during the first reading, but it.
Why?
I actually, you know, I mean, I'm.
Good questions.
I would just like an output of every single county, looking at what their filo terms are, based upon how their amount, their timeframe, and then what they're doing. Is it a phase progression? You know, I would like to look at maybe if we do it for 20 years, what about year 25? We're going up per megawatt, the output, because I know their output goes down the longer they're there.
And that is if they don't update.
Yep.
And what we're looking at right now in the state of South Carolina, that solar produces less than 1% of the matrix.
Yep.
As you heard from Sterilite, they're trying to go zero. What's happening, a lot of times, companies are looking in this county and the state, and they want to know the the power mix. What do we have? They don't consider.
Yeah, how much renewables are on the grid?
Right. If there's not enough, then we're off the table at that point, too.
Yeah, but that that was renewables that they agrees we have, they're selling to Santee Cooper, which.
They can sell to co-ops, Santee Cooper.
And anybody you will buy, who they can sell to, right?
And that's.
But they're not selling to Duke Energy, the city of Camden, Fairfield Electric, or Black River, right?
Their agreements would be through the co-op.
County.
They could go through the co-ops or through the demand. So you have, they have the option there, and it depends on who wants to purchase that from the solar provider or the solar company to do that. So most of the terms, going back to that, can be 20 to 30 to 40. If you try to go a short, short term, they're not going to do it.
Oh, absolutely. And I'm not saying a short term, but I would like a all four, what, 46 counties in South Carolina? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, I would like a breakdown of all 46 counties and what their agreements are as far as filos, and then before we proceed going forward on these agreements. Because if we're looking at Clarendon County and Newberry County, just from my knowledge on the industry, I don't think there's a whole lot of solar progressive developments in either of those counties. And I know that there's a lot in other counties across South Carolina, so I would like to look at what they're doing compared to what we're doing so we can be ahead of the grid so we don't have to go back to looking at what we're doing as far as the influx of people crisis. You know, let's let's hit the nail on the head prior to us getting, you know, our finger hidden. So, but thank you, Mr. Burgess. I appreciate you being here.
Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. Burgess, can you go back to Mr. Brazel's, the tax structure?
What you're paying is a flat fee at that point.
I think that's the most you've ever spoke. That was impressive.
I don't like to speak much, but when it's important, I like to speak.
Very well done.
Sounds like me.
The question I had was relative to the percentage of tax. So 6%, 4%, or is it less than that? I feel like it could potentially be even less than that for a $50 million investment.
Flat fee, what you're entering into is a filo which allows you to do the SS, an SSRC and go into a multi-county park. So the 2,500 is basically the agreed payment. Now, some counties will charge you more, and it's still a 6%, but you're just entering into a filo agreement as a legal measure to lock it down in the length of term. So it could be less than 6%, but in fact, you're you're getting a flat fee. The 6% is going to go down with an 11% depreciation over the span of the filo. So the filo is going to drop each year if you do it based on that.
Well, wait a minute. My taxes don't go down because my houses or buildings depreciate. Houses different.
The industrial equipment is what depreciates.
So you're depreciating the equipment. The solar field is is like a, they would pay their tax to the Department of Revenue.
Right.
Is is an equipment item.
Correct.
So so no, not a structure, so it's, that's how the difference is.
Right.
So so it's still much, much, much less than 4% even, I would think, at a $50 million project.
This will be roughly an $80 million project.
$80 million project. And if it's only $200,000 a year, what I want to see is consistency. Of course, we want to see industry here. Not everybody's a fan of solar fields. I have mixed feelings about them. I understand it's renewable renewable energy, but it takes a lot of plastic and glass and parts and pieces to make those panels as well. So the work that goes into making all those parts and pieces is not clean energy. I'll support it on first reading, but I would like to have some more detailed information, and I'd like to know how the taxes are relative to other things.
Yeah, fair enough. I can do that.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Burgess, do we have any negotiation power on who they sell it to, or it's completely in their ball court?
The best way to look at that is we are just one part of the process. If they, if this doesn't work, then project doesn't happen. If we go through this and the utility doesn't agree to their price to put it on the grid, it doesn't happen.
Okay.
So this is just, everyone does it a little bit different. Some are a little bit farther along than others. So we're just one part in the process.
Mr. Tomlinson.
Madam Chair, and I'm not sure, I guess this is Mr. DeBose. Could I make a motion to table this agenda item first reading until we have some concrete evidence coming back regarding the ask of the filo agreements for the other 46 counties across South Carolina?
Not sure on Tree, the precise schedule. I know White Oak pursuant to, I guess, some of the purchase.
Or push it back until until we can get a little bit, because we just, I mean, I remember doing a resolution maybe in October.
Correct, we did.
And it was, you know, we we kind of all got briefed, and then now this is here, and we have three readings. These questions were asked during our debriefs, and I haven't received any information upon it. But would it, could we push it back? Could I make a motion to push this back into our first meeting in December? Because that would that give us enough time to to actually make a educated judgment on what we're giving?
I know the White Oak project is on a tight timeline wherein they.
So they already have their purchase power agreement. They already have everything going forward.
They need their approvals before the end of the year. So I understand y'all will probably only have one December meeting. So White Oak, the next item, I know would need to receive.
But I could make a motion to push it back, is what you're saying.
I believe this Project Tree, I don't know if their timeline is as tight.
Well, I'm pretty sure they would, they would be able to work with another two weeks, right?
We can, we can request.
Oh, well, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to push the reading back of this, and we can go to the next one until the first meeting in December, until we can get a little bit more information on it. Because I, right now, I am a no vote on this, and I would like to receive a little bit more information on it because I'm a huge proponent of renewable energy as a fact. I think it is a big asset for our county, but going forward on it in a measure that we don't know, it could be a means to something that I'm will not stand for. But Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we push this back to the first meeting in December.
Okay, first meeting in December. That would be a motion to amend, because right now, we're on a motion to approve the first reading.
That would be a motion to amend my, the current motion.
And it's a deferral for first reading at the first December meeting?
That is correct.
And again, I'll, to be clear, I know Project White Oak, again, is seeking all three readings before the end of the calendar year. It's the next one. I believe your questions are probably applicable.
Yeah, and we could be happy if we got some some more information on this. We know we could call.
Any of these projects to hold this council hostage if they're not ready to?
Understood. I just wanted to make y'all aware of that.
Okay. A motion to amend and defer this vote first reading to December 1st. Is there a second? I'll second the motion for Branton, and we're into discussion for the amendment. Yes, Mr. Cato.
Pity is that you had the information that Mr. Brazel was asking for by second reading. Tomlinson, I apologize.
I knew I was good-looking, but not that good-looking. Boy, you're getting close.
It depends on what the counties are willing to share. If I have to go through FOIA, then they have a right to 30 days to respond. Some will probably just say, here's what we do. So from 46 counties, I might get half the information, and from the other 46, they may say, you can FOIA us for it. It just depends on how willing they are to share the info.
So to Mr. to Mr. Burgess's point, presumably, any county that has, and different counties have different conventions about posting their past ordinances online and making them publicly available, but some of them, if they have enacted filo ordinances approving agreements, might be available on a website. Yet, at Mr. Burgess's point, some of it might require FOIA responses or some more follow-up.
Mr. Schumake and then Mr. Brazel.
So so my concern in postponing is, you know, these are some of the first ones of these that have gotten this far along, and I'm very concerned about sending a sort of inconsistent message. I think that we have three readings for a reason, so I think that we have two readings to sort of get those answers. And obviously, if Councilman Tomlinson gets to a place where he can't support it, or Councilman Brazel, then that's fine. But but to table this, and particularly the next project, I have two issues. One, I'm definitely not going to vote in favor of table on the next one. I don't think it's necessary holding us hostage, but if our link in the chain fails, they'll just go somewhere else. So and again, we have a month to do this, so I would not support postponing it, and I would pass it on first reading. Again, we have second reading to do that, and I think treating them differently is problematic because one gets treated differently than the other. So I think they should both move forward on first reading. We were briefed on this kind of generally. So I would support moving them and sending the message to the business community that we are receptive, and then we can see if these issues are in second reading. Those are my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake, Mr. Brazel.
Thank you. So I agree with Councilman Tomlinson on a lot of your points, but I think that is why we have three readings. Could we have, could we have more information and potentially an executive session on this at our next meeting on the 12th and really flesh this out and clear this up? really flesh this out and clear this up? But, but I'll support it on first reading.
Our next meeting, the 28th, by the way.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. So, just to, to be clear, I, I agree with Derek on the fact that, that we don't, we don't want to send a negative signal, and I think we have those three readings ahead of us to, to really flesh this thing out. So, I have more questions, and I'd like to get some more answers, but we do want to, we do, we do want to be very business-friendly here, so I'm okay with where we're at for first reading. Thank you.
And I can pull stuff together for the next meeting.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Burgess.
I also, I agree with Mr. Schumake and Brazel. I think this is the reason we have three readings. I want to commend you on bringing this out, though, some very good points to this discussion. But I'll, I can support it on the first reading, but I would like to have a lot of detail between now and the second reading.
Can do.
Any other comments or concerns, discussion for the amendment to defer?
Call the question. I'd like to call the question, you guys have a vote?
Okay, I, I will. Mr. Jones made me lose my trans. All right, amendment to defer this, amendment on the motion to defer to December 12th.
I can, I'm happy to pull my, pull my motion or amendment to it, if that.
That's up to you. You'll withdraw?
Sure, let's withdraw my amendment.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, Mr. Tomlinson with, Mr. Tomlinson withdraws his amendment, so we're back to discussion of the primary matter, first reading of this ordinance. And hostage might have been a strong word, I didn't, I just wanted, yeah, I don't want anyone up here to not have the information they need going into a vote, so this, you know, their schedule might have to be flexible a little bit. All right, all those in favor of this first reading of the FLO ordinance for Project Tree indicate by raising your hand. Right, Mr. Cato, myself, Mr. Schumake, and Mr. Brazel, and those opposed, Mr. Jones and Mr. Tomlinson. This passes first reading, and Mr. Burgess and Mr. Templar, if you'll get Mr. Tomlinson and Mr. Brazel everything they need going into the second reading, please.
And if just, y'all feel free to reach out with any other specific questions. I know you probably will come up with more, but.
Thank you, Mr. Templar.
Go ahead and pull whatever we can.
Thank you. And Mr. Burgess, I appreciate all your, your hard work on this and that.
No problem.
And you don't have to have all 46 counties, but at least 43 and a half, you know?
43 and a half.
That, that would make it better.
I was hoping I could take out McCormick, since most of that's a federal forest.
There you go.
All right, and that information will be helpful for this next agreement as well. So, Bravo, first reading of a FLO ordinance for Project White Oak, authorizing pursuant to Title 12, Chapter 44 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement by and between Kershaw County, South Carolina, and Project White Oak, as sponsor, and one or more sponsor affiliates to provide a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes, incentive, and certain special source revenue credits for the benefit of a project in the county and other related matters. Is there a motion at this time for this ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Schumake moves to accept, is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Cato with a second, into discussion.
Same.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely, yep, the exact same, and, and my vote will be the same on this. I wish we could push it back, and none of that times are, are strict, and we're having upcoming year coming. But I appreciate all of staff's hard work and dedication to getting this put before us.
Mr. Burgess, are there any major differences?
None, this won't be 75 megawatts as opposed to 80, that's the major difference.
But for the same fee?
The, the fee on this, since both are based on 2,500 per megawatt, the fee on this is actually, would be 187,500, because it's on that production scale. But otherwise, it's more or less identical in every regard to the prior ordinance.
All right, thank you, I found it, it's page five and six. All right, any other discussions or questions? Okay, all those in favor of this first reading of the FLO ordinance for Project White Oak indicate by raising your hand. Mr. Cato, myself, Mr. Schumake, and Mr. Brazel, and those opposed, Mr. Jones and Mr. Tomlinson. Right, this passes first reading. Next ordinance, first reading of the Bethune Property Conveyance Ordinance, in ordinance, thank you, Mr. Burgess, in ordinance authorizing Kershaw County to convey county-owned real property located at 2843 Mecklenburg Road, 325 Brown Street, and 2863 Mecklenburg Road. To the Town of Bethune for public purposes, the property to convey consists a total of 17.1 acres, more or less, and is further identified on the Kershaw County tax maps as parcels, Bravo 141-0000047, 11.18 acres more or less, Bravo 141-0000048, 4.1 acres more or less, and a portion of Bravo 141-0000049, a 1.9 acre portion, more or less. Is there a motion at this time regarding this ordinance?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we accept the Bethune Property Conveyance Ordinance.
Okay, Mr. Cato with the motion, is there a second?
Madam Chair, I will second the ordinance.
Mr. Tomlinson, second, and into discussion, Mr. Cato, you have the floor.
I was approached a good while ago from the Mayor of Bethune and other councils, council members in, in Bethune, and, and some community leaders in Bethune, about the property that was adjacent to what is now the Bethune Resource Center, which is the old Bethune High School. This property joins their property that they already have, and due to some of the lines, some of it goes across the tract that they have. Some of this property is the old football field, some of it's the old baseball field, and they have plans for the future to redo this property, to bring it to tuition, to have a park and update it. And there's also another section that the county owns, which is a, give or take eight to nine acres, that the county is going to hold on to. But I, I feel that this would be very useful to Bethune, and I, and I want to refer to Mr. DeBose and let him explain exactly the inner workings of this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Cato. Yeah, as conceived, these three parcels, or two of these parcels and a portion of the other, would be conveyed to Town of Bethune for public purposes. The form deeds are not included in the ordinance at this first reading, but they would contain reversion clauses, which would state that if Town of Bethune does not use the property for a public purpose, the title would revert back to Kershaw County. Those deeds will be included for y'all at second reading. Plat of the 1.9 acre portion of one of the parcels has already been prepared, it'll be included as well. We've reached out to Town of Bethune about processing that plat, because it has to be approved under their local zoning code, and we've gotten responses. So, all of that is in the works, and to Mr. Cato's point, the retain, the 1.9 acre portion comes out of a roughly nine or 10 acre tract. Kershaw County will be retaining that property in case it has some future use for it. The administrator has spoken to possible public safety sites or some other public purpose, but it's conveniently located at an intersection, and again, might serve some county purpose in the future.
Thank you, Mr. DeBose.
And I see the Mayor of Bethune is here.
She is. The Honorable Mayor Susan Holly is here, and also the Honorable Mayor Melissa Emin is here.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Sure, Bethune sets all responsibilities for the maintenance of the property.
That the city of the Bethune will, yes, they will. That's my understanding.
Councilman Kate and I talked about that, and it's, yeah, no pun intended, but I mean, that's why I'm glad to give it to you. Got you. Thank you, call for a question.
Any other comments, questions? All right, all those in favor of an ordinance authorizing Kershaw County to convey county-owned property to the Town of Bethune indicate by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, this passes, this is the first reading. All right, that concludes our ordinance portion of this meeting, we're up to item number 11, new business. First item under new business is dates for November and December meetings. This was placed on the agenda by Councilman Sammy Tucker Jr. And Mr. Schumake, I'll give you the floor right now for this item.
Yeah, Councilman Tucker. See, just why he can't make it. Basically, as a little bit of a short introduction, we have, we meet the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, but next month, that fourth Tuesday will fall the day after Christmas. So, fairly straightforward, I would just like to make a motion that for the month of December, we hold only one meeting, which would be the second Tuesday, which is the 12th, and we thus cancel the December 26th meeting, and we'll be back to two meetings a month in January.
Okay. Motion to cancel the fourth Tuesday meeting in December, which would be December 26th, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cato, and into discussion, any concerns for anyone?
No, we've always.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of canceling the second meeting in December, that would be December 26th, indicate by raising your hand. Right, and the vote is unanimous, we'll go ahead and cancel that meeting, and Ms. Hannah, if you'll take it off the calendar and off the website, too. Right, next item, Bravo, deadlines for appointments to boards and commissions. This was also placed on the agenda by Councilman Sammy Tucker's, and Mr. Schumake, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What Councilman Tucker discussed, which I agree with, and I think a lot of us that were here for his initial discussion, is we have a few, not a lot, but we have some boards and commissions where the appointments are delegated to other entities, so perhaps the Town of Bethune, or the Town of Elgin, or some other entity.
Mr. Schumake, will you make a motion, and then we'll get into discussion?
Well, okay, before I do that, this is, let me ask the, because I need a legal question. If we wanted to change our rules so that entities only had 90 days, or after 90 days of no appointment, would the council got to appoint them? Is that in our ordinances? Would that be, would need, we need to write that up as an ordinance, or can we do that as a rule change?
That is built into some of these ordinances that enacted some of these boards, but perhaps not all, we would have to do a census. For those boards or commissions that contain a municipality appointee and nominee, if it does not exist, I believe it would require an ordinance, because I believe all of those boards and commissions were established at some point by ordinance. Some are codified in the county code, some are standalone ordinances, but we can certainly, if it's the will of council, undertake that review and bring those boards and commissions back to you that require amendment to have a ninth.
Yeah, that, that is what I thought. So, if I can just give kind of a description, because I think we can just have a discussion without a vote, Madam Chair, just kind of explain what I would like to do, what I think makes sense. I don't know that we need to amend each individual one, I think we could just come up with a new ordinance, because we wouldn't be necessarily changing anything about that ordinance. We could just say that any ordinance or policy whereby any other entity appoints a board member, if that board member is not appointed within 90 days, authority reverts back to council. So, I would ask that we maybe draft that, and then we bring it back, and we can actually vote on it as ordinance. I don't think it's appropriate to do it orally with an ordinance amendment, I think it makes sense to have that in writing. So, I don't really think we need to vote on anything, and we'll vote on it when it comes back.
Let's move on.
An ordinance for the, any board that is not already covered under a current ordinance?
Correct, yep.
All right.
Again, I was on the agenda, but I, I had that feeling, so I think we can just.
It's inappropriate for discussions, I think, but that's okay. All right, Charlie, recreation plans, and a recommendation from the Finance Committee. This was placed on the agenda by Councilman Schumake, so I will give you the floor. I want to start with the recommendation from Finance Committee first, though.
Sure, so what I'd like to do then is get the recommendation.
Yes. Mr. Jones?
Should we not put it on the floor by motion, then, second then for discussion, and your recommendation?
So, I was just going to read the motion, just so everyone knows what the recommendation is, so people can choose to make a motion if they'd like. Basically, just a briefing to council from what the Finance Committee did, and then a motion.
And, and legal opinion?
I believe that's probably a rules and process under y'all's procedures as to how you would want it approached. You know, y'all do routinely receive briefings before matter is on the floor with a motion and second, but I believe y'all's convention is typically for a motion and second, and then a discussion.
And the reason I would like to do it a little bit different is because there's some context that may explain sort of what the motion is, and I think the motion may need to be broken apart. So, I think it would be helpful to explain it, but.
So, we can't have a motion?
We can have a motion, but I don't know, I don't know who wants to make what motion. Like, like I say, I have, there's five different options here, or five different allocations, and so I could make just a motion on my own, but I think it might help for everyone at the table to be.
So, I would like the Finance Committee's report first.
Yeah, Council, Councilman Schumake spent the time over the past couple of days to write up the motion based upon our meeting, and this is the recommendation for him, Councilman Tucker and I, sitting down as a Finance Committee.
Mr. Jones, is your, is your point that there should be a motion before we discuss any of the plans?
Hard feelings if we don't do it this way, but normally, we just do a motion, second, then discussion. He tells us what they, and you can do amendments to it.
Actually, it would be cleaner to just give a briefing and then open the floor for motions, but.
I'll just.
Madam Chair, you're the rules.
I would like the recommendation from the Finance Committee. It's a subcategory under item Charlie. I do agree that there needs to be a motion on the floor before we get into any discussion, so I will just ask council, we're not going to discuss anything right now, we're going to simply receive the Finance Committee's report, and then if there's a motion.
I like that clarification.
So, it reflects what's. Could you make sure this is put online with the agenda packet from this meeting? Yeah. So, the Finance Committee report begins with just a summary, since there's been kind of a long history. So, here's the summary of what led us to this point. So, on May 23rd, 2023, Kershaw County Council passed a motion to improve recreation facilities. This motion allocated $6 million in funds for use on suitable recreation projects contingent on a $6 million match from the Health Services District. Pursuant to the motion to improve recreation facilities, the county administrator collected proposals for improvements in the North Kershaw area, the Kershaw County West Complex, and three alternative recreation projects in the Camden area, revitalization of Larry Doby, revitalization of Woodward Park, or revitalization of both Larry Doby Complex and Woodward Park. In turn, as required by that motion, these proposals were reviewed by the Kershaw County Recreation Commission. On October 10th, 2023, Parks and Recreation Director Shane Duncan presented an update to council. Specifically, Director Duncan relayed that, along with the Recreation Commission's unanimous approval, he supported, one, moving forward with projects in Westville, Bethune, Boyd Young Park, Copeland Park, and the Kershaw County West Complex, costing approximately $2 million, and three, pursuing the option to improve Woodward Park, and if possible, purchasing the land adjacent to Woodward Park. On October 19th, 2023, pursuant to a referral from Vice Chairman Jimmy Jones, the Finance Committee met with Director Duncan and county administration to discuss these various options. The Finance Committee accordingly makes the following recommendations. After reviewing the projects and in light of the meetings and the same, the Finance Committee recommends the following to county council. One, that they approve the $367,000 for improvements in Westville and Bethune, as set forth in Mr. Duncan's estimate. Approve 180,000 for lighting upgrades at Boyd Young Park. Approve 180,000 for lighting upgrades at Copeland. Approve 1 point, or 1,273,000 for improvements in Kershaw County West, and approve 10 million as set forth in the estimates by Director Duncan for one of the two projects below, either the revitalization of Woodward Park, and if funds are available, purchase the land adjoining the park, or revitalize Larry Doby. So, those are the recommendations of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee also reminds the county council that according to the original motion, moving forward on these projects is contingent on the Health Services District committing matching funds at their next regularly scheduled meeting. No funds from the county's $6 million allocation to recreation will be expended until after this process is completed. So, that is the summary and recommendations of the Finance Committee, and at that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schumake.
So, is the Finance Committee going to make a motion?
I, I am prepared at this point to make a motion. So.
So, we'll go back, yep, we'll go back up to Charlie, recreation plans, if there's a motion at this time from any council members.
So, because the Finance Committee is giving two options for the 10 million, I would like to make, as a first motion, I would make a motion that this county, this county council approve 367,000 for field improvements in Westville and Bethune, approve 180,000 for lighting upgrades at Boyd Young Park, approve 180,000 for lighting upgrades at Copeland, and approve 1,273,000 for improvements at Kershaw County West. That would be the first motion.
Okay, is there a second on this?
Second.
Mr. Tomlinson, second, and into discussion. Mr. Tomlinson, second, and into discussion, and if everyone has their Finance Committee report, this would be the first, second, third, and fourth bullet points in that report.
And if I may just.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
It is, and just for clarification, this has no bearing on the $10 million yet, so this is only a motion for the $2 million on those other parks. The KC West number, there was some money in the budget for capital improvements to KC West, this would obviously be in addition to that, but those have already been allocated.
I'm having a tough problem accepting this motion. You're going to make another motion after this motion?
Correct, basically just having it in two parts, because I know there's some debate about where that money should go.
I'm going to wait to, I'm not going to vote on this one, I'm going to wait to second part, so I have everything together.
Okay.
Why don't we just put it all?
Mr. Tomlinson?
You good with that?
Sure, well, can I do this then? Can I withdraw my motion and make a new motion, so I have to do it?
Mr. Schumake with her.
So, sure, so the new motion would be that, and for ease of repeating myself, the new motion would be that the county council adopt the first, second, third, and fourth recommendation laid out by the Finance Committee, which are the numbers I just allocated, and then my motion would be that, as to the $10 million, we approve the $10 million for revitalization of Woodward Park, and if funds are available, purchase of the land adjoining Woodward Park. That would be my motion then.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Tomlinson with the second, and we're into discussion.
And that, and then that motion that it clearly states that there is no purchase of the available land, it is if funds are available for there, so.
Correct.
This is strictly going to the current Woodward Park project.
That's not what his motion just said, though.
It is, it is, yeah, so the motion is revitalization of Woodward Park, and if funds are available, purchase of the land adjoining Woodward Park. And to be clear, this is not developing that land, we've already met, there's not funds for that, so this would just be improving Woodward Park. If there's a, if there are some money left over, we could purchase that land, and if a private developer, someone wanted to come in later, that's up to them, but all this would do is improve Woodward Park, and just, I can have the floor for just a moment, and then I'll stop. One of the things that came in the meeting from Mr. Duncan is that the need in Camden is such that they have no option but to use Woodward and Larry Doby. And the reason that the Rec Commission unanimously recommended this, as did Mr. Duncan, as did, well, the county administrator and our engineer, is because if the money goes into Larry Doby, then Woodward is still in disrepair, and they have to use it. So this brings at least that park up to a condition that is usable. This isn't a travel ball field, the drawings show that, this is quite literally just bringing Woodward Park some love and attention that hasn't seen in 30 years, so that after this development, and the money in KC West, and substantial money, by the way, in North Kershaw, what you'll see is all our parks being brought up to a level that our children in Kershaw County can use them.
Madam Chair, we have Director Shane Duncan in the audience, can we bring him up to give a briefing on the, the commission's report, and then the recommendation?
They're not going to entertain a commission report, but I would like him to come up here for questions.
Questions for Shane Duncan.
Questions, yes, but we've already received his brief and the commission's brief, so I don't want to rehash that.
And I'm perfectly fine with that. Mr. Duncan, from your recommendation of where the funds are going between Larry Doby and Woodward, what will be your recommendation?
Well, as I stated definitely in that finance meeting, my concerns with, or the concerns with going with the Larry Doby complex, let's say when construction, construction begins, if this construction begins in the spring, where do we, where do we play all of our baseball in Camden? Because right now Woodward Park is in such disrepair with lighting and different, different other situations, it would be very difficult to run a spring league out of that park while Larry Doby's being built. So I think we need to, we definitely need to consider that, because we will see a drop, or it would hurt our spring season if we're, if we're doing that construction elsewhere, and we cannot play baseball in Camden, and now I think we would get a lot of backlash on that. We, it would put us to a situation of probably putting limits on registration numbers or something like that, so we don't have as many playing wild constructions going on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Duncan. Mr. Schumake?
This will be my, I just wanted to make, as a courtesy to our council member who's absent, Councilman Tucker, obviously, again, had that work emergency, I think it's, I think he wanted, would want to be heard on this. Councilman Tucker does support Larry Doby, obviously he's not here to vote, but I did want to make that clear, so that Councilman Tucker's voice was represented here, he's a big proponent of Larry Doby, I obviously disagree respectfully, but he is a big proponent. The second thing is, I want to point out on the West Water Reef side, what this does for KC West is gets us, I believe in Mr. Duncan, you can answer this, this will get us a new entrance in to KC West, as well as parking, and potentially some food truck area to sort of help complete out KC West, correct?
Right, because one, one serious issue at that park is parking and traffic, and with one entrance in and one way out right now, it's, it's causing some issues over there, especially when we have a big crowd. North Central often does a softball tournament there in the spring, too, and when they bring their 36 schools in to do that softball tournament, it's, it's very difficult over there. So, yeah, this paved parking and a new entrance away in and out will definitely alleviate some issues over there.
Thank you. Mr. Duncan, what's the square footage of Larry Doby complex right now?
We're at about 34 to 35 acres.
Okay, and Woodward Park, right now?
It's about the same.
Usable, how much wetland is in it?
In the.
In the 33 acres of land on Woodward, how many wetlands?
Uh, I can't, I can't give you that figure right now, but I can get that to you for sure.
But there is a difference between the two.
Right.
Certainly in these plans, there has been more multi-sport facilities in option two, so it would appear that there's more usable land at Larry Doby from this, from these maps. And, and say again, the issue with construction on Larry Doby in the spring would be?
Well, if, if you're doing construction on that, that full complex, you cannot use those ball fields, so that would eliminate the, the ability to play, play spring sports on those ball fields.
For one season.
For one season, that's correct.
Okay.
Because right now, most of our games are scheduled at the Larry Doby complex because of some of the, a lot of the issues at Woodward Park, so we're playing on all four softball slash baseball fields, the bigger fields, and all four T-ball fields over at Doby.
So we, Woodward Park is in such disarray, I guess, that we're not even using it?
We're using it for practices, we don't play a lot of games over there because the light systems are pretty bad.
Okay.
And, and we also have a restroom building that's, that's very bad.
Just a second, Mr. Jones, I would like to make a motion that we convey Woodward Park to the city of Camden, would make an amendment to Mr. Schumake's motion that we convey Woodward Park to the city of Camden, it's off our plate, and then we only have one complex that we have to continue to take care of.
You have that motion on the floor?
Yes.
I second it.
Okay, second by Mr. Jones, any discussion on this amendment? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment to Mr. Schumake's motion of conveying Woodward Park to the city of Camden, indicate by raising your hand. Mr. Jones and myself, and those opposed? Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. Cato, Mr. Schumake, and Mr. Brazel, okay, the amendment fails.
Now, may I have the floor?
Yes.
Unless somebody else says something they want to say. All right. Mr. Temple, I have some overhead shots.
Yes.
If you could put those up, please.
Ryan, can you advance?
Where's my, did anybody get my laser? It was.
I haven't seen it since we had the screens, Mr. Duncan.
I got it, that's, that's it, that's it. Oh, well, we got the screens, I can't do it. Okay, try to follow with me, let's see, what we have here now is, I want you to put up the October 4th, 2022.
That's the 3D rendering?
Okay, this, this is the Kershaw County Parks and Recreation Master Plan down by A D C back in October 4th, 2022, and if you look at it, of course, you see you had, what, two, four, six ball fields, two, four, I think soccer fields, and some other things, but if you go to the price of it, this was in 2022, it was $14,498,257.90. Roughly last year, it was, 2022, excuse me, it was almost $15 million, and of course, with time and inflation and everything else, you're probably looking at about $18 million now. Okay, then if you go back to the recommendation for option two, you got that, Ryan? Let's look at option two.
The rendering?
The rendering, yeah, okay, option two is a, is a big difference. You've got, instead of four, you got, I'm saying six, you got four fields, and you have a soccer field, one, two, how many soccer fields is that? Mr.? Four.
Four.
Four soccer fields, you got about 450 parking spaces, correct? Okay, and of course, you'd need to really, to expand this the way we wanted to do, you'd have to really buy about 33 acres, wouldn't you? To go back to the October 22nd plan, the first plan I showed, you'd have to, you'd have to purchase about 33 acres, wouldn't you?
Yes, that included the additional.
Yeah, I guess what my question is, because so basically, this is going to be an incomplete project that we're looking at right here with Woodward. Has it been any discussion, Mr. Duncan, with your commissioners, you're about the purchase of the land, that y'all would come back later and ask for the money for the purchase of the land in your meetings?
We have, we have not discussed that, it's just that it was the, that, that one piece was that it's contingent to being able to possibly buy that land, if there's money left over.
But it was mentioned to possibly try to buy that land, because we know the project, the project that we were told we needed by the private groups, the professionals, staff, October 4th, 2022, was that, that we needed to do the project that purchased the land and everything else. That's what we were told then, and that was $15 million. I guess I want to, how can we not do, how can we do 15, how do we need $15 million back then, when now we say we only need 10 million? Well, that tells me, it just leads me to speculate that it is a, this is a phased plan that, that we're presenting here tonight with Woodward Field. Now, go to my, if you would, go to my option one, Larry Doby's. If you look at Larry Doby's, we, it's one, two, three, four, five, five soccer fields, you have about, with both parking spaces, you have about 500 parking spaces, you already own all the land, and you look at the ball fields, the Little League fields, you got ball fields on the current plan that you're recommending with Woodward, but are there any youth fields on that ball field that you're currently with Woodward?
You're talking about the small T-ball fields? No, there's not any over there.
Not at Woodward, not at Woodward.
At Woodward Park, right.
But there is here at Larry Doby's.
Right.
You know, and the thing about it is, is that if you look at the, if you look at the two plans, folks, if you just look at the two plans, you can see that Larry Doby offers a heck of a lot more, and it's a complete project, whereas Woodward Field is an incomplete project. And then I still go back to the question, what's the difference now than in October 4th, 2022? What is the difference? Why did we need something that was going to be $5 million, $15 million, but yet now we're, we're satisfied with $10 million?
Well, yeah, like you stated before, we, they cut two baseball fields out, the, the four big multipurpose fields, there's a lot that's coming out of that, that past plan.
Because we'd need to buy the extra land to do it, wouldn't we?
No.
You could do, you could do it on that.
By, by what, what the recommendation is, yes, sir.
But it's not on there.
You, I think, if I may.
On Woodward, what you got, what you're recommending tonight with Woodward is, is not on there.
Right, we'd have to cut two fields.
Yeah, but if you go with Larry Doby's, you don't have to cut any, because you've got everything you want, and you don't have to worry about.
I'm confused.
No.
No, let me finish, I've got to clarify on myself. Bottom line, what it boils down to, in November 2022, council was submitted for approval, a recreation complex plan at Woodward Park that in November 2022 would cost $14.5 million, almost $15 million. This involved land that Kershaw County did not own, and I would say that that would be now about $18 million. I oppose that plan as wasteful and too expensive. So now, it, it appears that council has submitted a plan to build a recreation complex at Woodward Field that they say will cost $10 million, so there's a $5 million difference. So a $14.5 million project a year ago will cost $10 million now, everybody says. This does not make, it just doesn't make any sense to me, and this is, to me, only BS. Pure BS.
Okay, Mr. Jones, Mr. Schumake?
Excuse me, bait and switch. Okay.
And Mr. Schumake?
I just, he wants a clarification.
Wait a minute, in all due respect, I do have the floor, and I.
That was my bad, I thought you were finished.
No, ma'am.
Go ahead.
You guys know I hesitate a little bit, not by choice.
I thought the bait and switch was the punchline, I'm sorry, Mr. Jones.
No, there's no, but anyway, I call Woodward the BS project, bait and switch project. Anyway, and as I said, this is only, to me, a bait and switch to yet start a new project that a year ago would cost $15 million, and now the Woodward project will cost $10 million. You know, I almost feel like I need an adult in the room to make sense, to help me understand what this is all about, but the Larry Doby option makes much more sense to Jimmy Jones, it may not to anybody else, but it does to me. The citizens would get a lot more value for the same amount of money, there is plenty of land at the Larry Doby complex, and the property is accessible. Also, instead of starting another new project that we cannot, and we won't finish, because we don't have that additional land, Kershaw County could, if we did Larry Doby, I feel like Kershaw County can finally complete one project. The only reason I feel some members of council don't want the Larry Doby option to promote is, and I'm sorry, guys, but I call it a BS, just a bait and switch, is kind of get our foot in the door with a partial plan with Woodward Park, and then we know we're going to have to come back later and spend more money on it, and once again, we'll have an unfinished project with the Woodward Field that's presented tonight. Could you put, this is really none of my business, but I do have a projection, could you put my projection of the housing unit up? And Ryan, you got it? Yeah. Okay, folks, I want you to look at this, this is really none of my business, because the city of Camden with their annexation, this is 650 houses, this is a project with the city. If there, it's, as I said, it's really none of my business, but yet when I see it backing up to Scott Park, when I see once there was purchase of some land that would back up to parts of Woodward Field, it becomes my business. Now, would, and that, and that just concerns me.
That's why I wish they'd annex Woodward Park as well.
I, I understand, so this is, this is where I'm at, guys, I just, I just can't support the Woodward, and the Woodward Field motion is on the floor, and you know what else bothers me, and, and I'm just going to speak exactly what it is, sometimes it's, it's hard to sit up here and say the ugly truth, but the truth has to come out. There are folks that don't want Larry Doby's, there's folks that would like to tear it down over my dead body, let it be torn down as long as I'm sitting up here. I'm not saying it's these guys, I'm, I'm not saying that at all, but I have much respect for these folks up here, just don't agree with them on this, this project. But we need to be careful how we move forward, very, very careful how we move forward, because we're going to be voting in an area, and Mr. Tucker, if I mistake, has made it public record that he supports the Larry Doby's as well. You know, this is what bothers me. MUFC gave $3 million, correct? The Health Resource is going to give $3 million, just an organization, we put $4 million in it, that's $10 million, and yet I would bet you a dollar to a donut, if you don't do the Woodward Field, you won't get that money, because it has been said in these council chambers, I asked the question, what if we made another decision? I said, is there any strings attached to this money? I was told, no. I said, so therefore, if we decide to not do Woodward, and we decide to go to Larry Doby's, would we get the money? No. Well, that's strings attached. Now, that's documented. Well, that's strings attached. Now, that's documented, that's on the video, it's there. Folks, let me tell you something, if you were to ask me why I don't support this, because the information here is not true. It's not the whole story. And I'm very, I'm, I'm, I'm very disappointed, you know, MUFC has laid off folks. They have put no, to my knowledge, based on what I've seen when I walked in there, the place needs a lot of work, the infrastructure, I mean, there's, there's, there's rooms and buildings that need construction done to it, but yet they'll give us $300 and put it to the Health Resource District, and give the Health Resource District the total control on what decision and where this money is going to go. And I'm going to tell you something, I don't know why we're voting on Woodward Field, because if you don't vote on it, we're not going to get any money. Were you aware of that, Mr. Duncan?
I was here when you, when, when those comments.
In the words I say, were, are true, are they not? That was said in these chambers, correct? You remember that?
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's, it's hard, guys, when it's the ugly truth. But this is the truth. And I wouldn't be surprised if they don't come after Larry Doby, but I pray I won't counsel long enough, because I'm not going, I'm not going to stand for Larry Doby to be touched. We got a wonderful opportunity of, of, of a hero in our community. I didn't know him, Larry Doby, but you know what? He achieved a lot in his life, and we honored him, and of course, they even, his organizations even put money into it to take that complex and complete it. It would be completed, we would have more for our money for $10 million versus what we're looking at with Woodward. But I'm going to tell you, it's Woodward or nothing. And I don't know if my colleagues know it or not, but why hasn't the Health Resource already given us the money? Said, hey, guys, make a decision, move forward. No. The Health, they're, they're waiting for us to vote first, because if we don't vote for Woodward Field, we won't get any money. So I don't even know why we're taking a vote tonight. Now, that's the truth, it's the ugly truth, I said it. And I hope my colleagues will reconsider, and let's do the right thing for Kershaw County and not do the Woodward Field complex. I have, excuse me, I'm sorry, excuse me. And I'm sorry to be so long-winded tonight, but I can't just get this out all at one time. Madam Chair, I'm going to go ahead and yield it this time, let somebody else talk, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Duncan?
Yes, please.
Okay, Mr. Brazel.
Hey, thanks for being here. Very compelling, Councilman Jones, thank you.
It's the truth.
I too will stand with you in protecting Larry Doby Field, and I think the rich heritage that, that we have here with, with Mr. Doby and his family, being from Kershaw County and the things that he did in his life is nothing short of, of awesome, right? So could we find the money to, to have a statue built and placed in the park?
If it's approved, yes, sir.
I, I would like, I would like to make a motion to amend the motion on the floor to approve an opportunity to find the money and get a quote to have a bronze life-size or, or larger statue of Larry Doby manufactured and placed in the, in the park of, of, of our choosing, whether we rename a park. I've had ideas such as Doby Woodward Complex, or if we wanted to put it in Larry Doby. I think.
Mr. Brazel, will you simply state your amendment?
Yes, thank you. I, I simply think it's a good idea. I would, I would like to make the amendment to, to add a statue. There's, there's plenty of line items.
Amendment to the motion on the floor to add a statue of Larry Doby, what location?
That, that would be at council's choosing at a later date.
Okay, amendment on the floor to add a statue of Larry Doby in the recreation plan, is that?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, Mr. Cato with the second, and discussion on the statue of Larry Doby only, please. If there is any.
I would, I would like to come.
I've got some comments when you finish.
I, this is kind of related to everything, but I would like, you know, and Mr. Jones, thank you for your compelling talk. I, it is. No, I, I know you're not done, and I know everybody's really passionate about this. We've had, I don't know, off the top of my head, I would probably say 12 different meetings where we've kind of discussed different things. Mr. Duncan, I appreciate all your hard work. But let's get back to the facts.
Let's discuss the statues, take a vote.
Directly discussing the statues, they're disgusting. I was just giving a precursor, thank you, Madam Chair. So the facts of what we're voting upon right now, it's not about this neighborhood that is still on my screen in front of me.
Can we get the neighborhood off the screen?
Yeah, so we're not discussing this. This has nothing to do with the Woodward Park Recreation Plan that I am sitting here about to vote upon. So I'd like to get that in place. Next, we're, what we are discussing is $12 million, $12 million. We're discussing $6 million that was donated from two private agencies, and the $6 million that are, are prof.
Mr. Tomlinson, I'm sorry.
That are coming together.
I'm not trying to be rude. Let's get through the amendment, and then go back to the, we'll go back to the original motion on the floor, which is Mr. Schumake's motion of the entire approval.
Sure. Yeah, all right.
Ready to take a vote on the statue? Anybody? Okay, Mr. Jones.
Vote. This is trying to lure me in, to sucker me in, to vote on this project. It does nothing to improve, it does nothing to change the outcome. I will not fall for this BS, bait and switch. And with all due respect to my colleagues, that was probably one of the most unclever motions I've ever heard in my life, because I certainly am not intimidated thinking that if I don't vote for a statue for Larry Doby, then I'm going to get condemned, vote me out of office, I don't care. I do care about Larry Doby's complex, and, and I don't have to vote for a statue because I'm sitting here fighting to get the complex done. But we want to put a statue up there, and I'm all, I'm germane to the conversation.
And there, there currently is a statue.
But anyway, they need a statue of me there, they need a statue of me somewhere. But anyway, but I had to put it away sometimes, but anyway. thank you, that was very clever, but I don't buy, I don't take debate, I vote against that.
Mr. Brazel, thank you.
We haven't voted yet, but.
One comment on the statue.
After me. Mr. Brazel, thank you for the amendment, because I think it's a good idea. But without any kind of preliminary cost estimate or what we're talking about, I can't support it. But let's get together and come up with a plan that we can present at a later time. Mr. Schumake is next. Mr. Brazel is next.
So I'll withdraw the motion to amend, but I still want a statue.
The motion to amend.
Now, I'm going to get to my question from Mr. Duncan.
Mr. Tomlinson is next, now that the motion is withdrawn.
I have the floor.
Mr. Tomlinson.
Okay, where, where were we? Mr. Duncan, I believe we were in a conversation with Madam Chair. Put her.
Yes, I would like all the questions for Mr. Duncan to be answered so that he can take his seat, because I don't want to keep.
I, I think I'm, actually, I do have one question. Your recommendation for where the money would be best spent that you provided to council a couple of meetings ago was where?
Woodward Park.
Yeah, that's all I have for you, Mr. Duncan.
One more question that I didn't get to because I rambled. What's the worst park in the county as far as our three major parks? And I'm, if I'm missing something out in Mount Pisgah and up in Bethune, forgive me, because I know there's a lot of needs. But, but our three major parks are West Waterie, Woodward, and Larry Doby, is that correct?
That's correct.
Which is the worst of the three, and the, one that's in the most disrepair?
Woodward Park.
Thank you, sir, that's all I needed to know.
So cut it loose.
Ma'am?
Cut it loose.
I don't disagree with that entirely, and if, if I knew there was positive conversation and something could be done with it, with the city, if I'd heard any of that.
Oh, no, that was just on the fly.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with that entirely, to, to be fair. Not a bad thought process.
Madam Chair, if, if I could.
Yes.
Make a comment on that. Now, there's never been any intention to get rid of either one of those parks, because we need both to support everything that we do in recreation. Because right now in the fall, we're playing soccer over at Doby, we're playing flag football over at Doby, we're playing flag football in the outfield of two of the ball fields, and soccer in two of the outfield, as well as the designated soccer space. We are playing fall baseball over at Woodward Park. So if we don't have both, we can't support all of those activities. When, there's no intention of getting rid of one of the parks. And I was, I was actually part of when, when those T-ball fields were, were built over at Doby. I was a maintenance foreman that year that those were built, and when we got the Baseball Tomorrow grant, the, the contingency to getting that grant was to rename that park the Larry Doby Complex. So that park is, is, is very near and dear to everybody, and there is no intention of, of getting rid of it and not using it. We, we're going to need both of them.
So I, I just know the maintenance is very intense, and I don't want to see a revitalization of any park that looks like it does now in 10 years, because that's what's happened countywide. And, and that's no fault to you or your team, just in general, we have more parks than we can maintain.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Brazel was in the middle of, did you get cut off?
At this point, I'm not sure, but I'm, I'm okay either way, it's fine. I think, I think we've all made good points, and I think there's a lot of passion here in the room, and I, I think we all care, but Shane, Shane's compelling presentation, it, it shows us that both are needed. We care about everything, we care about the kids, right? Let's, let's not make this about us, let's make this about the kids of Kershaw County. I'm ready to call the question when you are, sir.
No, no, I had. No, no, no. Sandy, if we care about the kids, we're going to do what y'all want to do, that, that, that is not. Listen, guys, I care about the kids, but bottom line is, we got $10 million. And one, I feel like we could use for other infrastructure instead of a ball field right now, but that's neither here nor there, it's not possible. However, Woodward Field will be a incomplete project, because you cannot move forward unless you buy the land. Am I right?
And the current, the current option does not include the land.
No, but, but it has been mentioned in some of the meetings that y'all have been sitting in, and I, I got a list, well.
I would like, I would like.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
Good at me?
Russell.
I'm sorry, my, my apologies.
Let me finish, and I'm trying so hard to be quiet when y'all are talking. And I'm not upset, I'm just trying to get some clarification. The ugly truth is, is that you do Woodward Field, the pressure's on it, it's going to be an incomplete project, you do. And we have, we'll have a whole lot less than if we do Larry Doby's, that's the bottom line. We do Larry Doby's, we got a complete complex. But however, I don't even know why we're voting, because it's not our decision. Decision's already been made, bought and paid for, because they've got $6 million they're holding. So if we don't do what they want to do, we're not going to get any money for Larry Doby's, anything else. They'll pull that money, that was said right here in these chambers, I was sitting in here, I asked the question. It was said, and so, this, I'm, I'm fine.
And for Mr. Cato.
Mr. Duncan. So let's, let's simplify this thing. The project that's before us tonight, option two. The engineering firm and everybody has said this project can be completed to the fullest for $10 million, is that correct?
That's what they said, yes, sir.
That's without a land purchase.
Right.
Okay, that would include, and I'm going to just put a total of somewhere around $727,000 going to Bethune and Westville Fields for complete restructuring of the infield-outfields, lighting dugouts, the whole, the whole nine yards.
Yes, sir.
Also, West Waterie being completed the way it should have been start with.
Yes, sir.
Correct? I have grandchildren that play at Larry Doby. Soccer, baseball, I've been over there for all of it. They, they play soccer, there's baseball going on, there's football going on. Larry Doby's not in that bad a shape, and with a little bit more money to put towards Larry Doby, it could be upgraded with, with very little. But you're saying that Kershaw County has to have both complexes?
For our, for our programs, yes, yes, sir.
To complete all the programs that Kershaw County has.
Yes, sir.
Woodward Park is basically, basically out of use for games or anything, it can only be used for practices, is that correct?
That's what we're doing, yes, sir.
So why wouldn't we restructure Woodward? I mean, and, and again, the, the option that's put before us is a completed project. There's no additional land being bought. It only says if there was leftover money. If, and if's a big word, it's kind of like but, but Woodward would be completed with $10 million. It would be a completed project. And we would have both complexes, and then later down the road, we can look at, at revitalizing or finishing up Larry Doby. And again, Larry Doby's in, in fairly decent shape, I go over there all the time. And I would never, for the record, I would never put it, write it down, put it in the notes, I would never, ever vote to do anything that would hinder getting rid, or, or that would, I would never vote to get rid or do anything against the Larry Doby Complex, ever. Thank you.
I do have a comment to make.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I can assure you folks right now that the Big Four in Kershaw County, Camden, when they first met in this, and you know this, Madam Chair, when they first met, there was discussion of tearing down Larry Doby's and having a building complex.
Correct, it was said.
Thank you, bingo. All right, guys, and thank you, Madam Chair, for being very straightforward with that. However, when I brought up Larry Doby's and we started discussing it, attitudes changed. But do I think beliefs have changed? No, I, I don't. And bottom line is, I think it's, I mean, I don't even know why I'm sitting here saying this, because we all knew what was going to happen, because we all knew what the people that are holding the purse strings told us they wanted. And bottom line is, we don't really have a choice. They've already made it for us. Okay, I'd have bet my house on that tonight, but I'm not a gambling man, and I'm just pretty, all right, thank you.
Mr. Cato.
One, one last thing. Mr. Duncan, is this your recommendation tonight?
Along with rec commission?
Along with the rec commission and the engineering firm, is that correct?
Correct.
That's the recommendation of all three?
Right.
Thank you.
The engineering firm recommended we do Woodward?
At the last meeting, they did.
At the last meeting, they did, yes.
For the most bang for the buck, is what they said.
Because they know that there's more money involved down the road with the stages.
Okay, a couple things. Thank you for splitting up the motion at first, because the dilemma for me is that, yes, I absolutely agree with the first four bullets, the Westville-Bethune and Casey-West especially complex. I want to see those get moving. I unfortunately can't support the motion. I don't understand, if we do not intend on purchasing the land, why it even says, if funds are available, purchase of the land. If we're not going to purchase land, we have no intentions, and we don't need it, why that's even part of the recommendation? Second thing is, I am very concerned with what happens to Larry Doby next, when all this money is dumped into Woodward Park, and then funds come available and the purchase of the land adjoining Woodward Park is purchased. And do we sometime in the future, maybe way past my time here, Larry Doby does end up looking like Woodward Park, or plan development comes in and pressures this council to do something with it? That is my concern. I've walked both of them, I don't like either of these plans. I think that the Larry Doby Complex option could have been done better, I'm not an engineer. I think the fields, the baseball fields are too big, we could actually fit two more in there if we scaled them back and positioned them differently. I do not like the road running through the middle. There's going to be, there would be people going back and forth, the road should be on the outside. So there's, I have issues with both of them, so frankly, I'm not impressed with any of these plans. So my vote will always, I'm not going to say always, my vote will be to revitalize Larry Doby Complex, but not with this option, so I can't support the motion tonight. Derek, thank you for the work you've put into it, I really do appreciate it. And yeah, I just wish those motions were still separated, because I did want to support the four, first, fourth, four items that were on there. Any other comments or concerns? Questions for Mr. Duncan? Okay, with that, we'll go to a vote. With that, we'll go to a vote. Right, and the motion is... I'm going to read everything since we've had a long discussion. Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Motion to approve $367,000 for field improvements in Westville and Bethune. $180,000 for lighting upgrades at Boyd Young Park. $180,000 for lighting upgrades at Copeland. $1,273,000 for improvements at Kershaw County West Complex, including the parking lot. And revitalization of Woodward Park and, if funds are available, purchase of the land adjoining Woodward Park. All those in favor of that motion indicate by raising your hand. Okay, Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. Cato, Mr. Schumake, and Mr. Brazel. And all those opposed, Mr. Jones and myself. Right, that motion passes. All right, back to our agenda. And thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for the discussion and all the points. Mr. Jones, thank you for all your research. Item Delta, planning and zoning code violations. This refers to the Watery Plaza dumpster. This was placed on the agenda by Councilman Schumake. So, Mr. Schumake, you have the floor.
Yes, I understand from talking to our attorney that there may be an update that may have bearing on what we may want to do.
Okay.
So I could first get an update.
Yes, the property owner, I believe, was served with a subpoena to appear to rule to show cause, a hearing that's pending for Monday before the Kershaw County magistrate. The property owner did reach out to the planning and zoning department and present sketch plans that would remediate the problem. Those are under review and they were received late today. But I do put that out there that the property owner has made contact and presented proposals and stated that they were generated last week. Again, just for full disclosures to current status of any contact with the property owner.
So, Madam Chair, my motion was going to be to authorize someone, ideally yourself, on county council to go speak on the county's behalf. So what I would like to do in light of this information, because this is still an issue and we don't know how the hearing will go, so what my motion would be, would be this, and we can discuss it. My motion would be that this county authorize Madam Chair to attend that hearing and speak on our behalf, to effectively communicate our strong interest in this getting resolved with deference of judgment to you on exactly how to best do that.
Okay. Motion to authorize myself to attend the hearing and speak on county's behalf as a whole.
And basically use your judgment based on the hearing and counsel attorney as to what we need to say, but basically authorize you to speak on the county's behalf about the importance of this to the county.
Right, is there a second? Do we need that? Were we worded?
Do we need a second? Second?
Second, okay. Second by Mr. Tomlinson. And into discussion, Mr. Schumake, you have the floor.
Sure, I just, so basically, for those who don't know what's going on, there's a property owner, the owner of the food line, is that correct? The owner of the plaza where the food line is located?
Correct. Yeah, the master owner has all those leases.
And so there's an ordinance in Kershaw County that requires that trash bins, trash receptacles be secured in an appropriate manner. And these trash bins are not, and property owners in the area are complaining, because for various reasons, animals, perhaps homeless, but the people are getting into those and trash is sort of going everywhere. The property owner was notified, nothing happened, he's been re-notified for this hearing. There's a fine that was imposed of $500. There was a remediation period under the law, and that fine's been running for $500 a day. There's a hearing scheduled for Monday, is that right, Mr. DeBose?
Correct, 9:30 on Monday.
9:30 AM on Monday morning. And so, again, not knowing how that'll go, obviously, if the business owner comes in there and says, "Look, we've got a plan in place," and, you know, the magistrate's going to impose a fine, but I just effectively wanted this body to be able to speak. And certainly, Madam Chair, I'm happy to attend with you if you'd like, but I do think it's important, because obviously, any of us only speak for ourselves without a four-person vote. And so I do think it's important for the community and the court system to see that we're taking this seriously when we have large business owners that sort of ignore ordinances. And maybe that didn't happen. You'll be in the room and be able to sort of ascertain what makes sense. But that's why I made the motion in the style that I did, and it basically gives you the discretion to go in and speak for us and address how serious this issue is for council.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Schumake, are you available Monday at 9:30?
I am.
Okay. I'd like to make amendment to the motion that Councilman Schumake and myself are both authorized to attend the hearing on behalf of the entire council.
I think you two would do a fine job.
Is that a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Brazel with a second. And any discussion on that? I bring that up because you're well-versed in this. You've been tracking it for a long time. I definitely want to be there to show council support as a whole. I think it does show that this is important to us. We've had some discussions about, does this kind of set the tone that we're going to show up at other hearings? No, absolutely not. I think if this council determines that we need to be somewhere on behalf of the citizens, then that's what we'll do. This does not at all mean that we're going to do this every time, but this is important. So, yes, Mr. Jones.
I was trying not to say anything on this one, but I've been dealing with it for a year, and we've just been running in circles. And I've gotten complaint after complaint after complaint. I don't think it's necessarily a great idea for council members to... We've got a county administrator, we've got a deputy county administrator, we've got staff that could handle, attorneys that could handle this. However, I'm going to support y'all on this tonight, but I want it resolved. We just got to have it resolved and hold somebody accountable who lives in Columbia, who's got a green box behind the food line, CC's Pizza, and it is trash all the time. It's been trashed for the last year. And I'm calling Watery Plaza's, no, it's the Food Line Plaza, I'm calling them out, because it's a shame when you've got individuals who live down the road and they got to turn and look at trash, because they had their dumpster in an illegal spot, for one. And they may have barriers now, but people pillage through it, trash, the wind blows it out. Let's just get it resolved, because everybody's got too much other to do than... This should have never been taken a year for this to happen this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And I agree with you. I think the staff is more than capable of handling it. Mr. DeBose will be there. And it might not be necessary that we need to speak or do anything, but yes, absolutely, I'll be there if this council would like us to be. All right, all those in favor of the amendment that Councilman Schumake attend also and be authorized to speak on behalf of council indicate by raising your hand. Right, vote is unanimous. And motion to authorize myself to speak on behalf of the council at the hearing indicate by raising your hand if you support that motion. Okay. And the motion passes. Mr. Schumake and I will be there Monday at 9:30 with you, Mr. DeBose, and we'll see if any actions needed on council's behalf. Right, up to, that concludes new business, up to number 12 for appointments. First appointment, Board of Zoning and Appeals. There's one vacancy. This is a four-year term. And everyone should have the board applicants in front of them. Is there a nomination for the Board of Zoning and Appeals at this time? And I do not have the Board of Zoning Appeals in front of me. Ms. Hannah, off the top of your head, do you know what district is not represented? If any? Because it looks like we have a variety of districts. Okay, District 4 is not represented on the Board of Zoning and Appeals. And we do have an applicant from District 4. Okay, at this time, I make a motion that Mr. Jeffrey Murphy is the nominee for the one vacancy on the Board of Zoning and Appeals representing District 4.
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Brazel. Any discussion? His application is in the packet.
I don't suppose Mr. Murphy is in the room by chance, is he?
Mr. Murphy? I don't think so. All right, with that, all those in favor of appointing Mr. Jeffrey Murphy from District 4 to the Board of Zoning and Appeals for a four-year term, indicate by raising your hand. Right, Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. Jones, Mr. Cato, myself, Mr. Schumake, and Mr. Brazel. All right, congratulations, Mr. Murphy. You are on the Board of Zoning Appeals. All right, next appointment, Planning Commission, one vacancy.
Madam Chair, if I may, it's not exactly a motion, but I just wanted to say with the Planning Commission, the vacancy that has occurred is on District 3. I just found that out today.
Okay.
So I would ask my fellow council members to give me one more meeting, because District 3 and District 6 are not represented on the Planning Commission. So I'd like to get a chance to talk to Councilman Cato and have the full county represented. But obviously, anyone can make any motion they want, but that's what I would ask.
Okay. Motion to table the one vacancy on Planning Commission, is that fair to say?
Sure.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Brazel. Any issues with that? Okay, all those in favor of moving the Planning Commission to the, what we're going to table it for now, we'll decide on a meeting that it goes to, indicate by raising your hand. All right, Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. Cato, myself, Mr. Schumake, and Mr. Brazel. And for the record, Mr. Jones has stepped out. All right, appointment Charlie, Assessment and Appeals Board, we have five vacancies.
Do we have it?
We do. So let's remove Mr. Murphy, because he was appointed.
Yeah, he's a great guy.
Madam Chair, I see there's three applicants for the five positions, correct?
Correct.
I would like to be the first to appoint Timothy Thomas.
Okay.
Who is in my district.
Okay, District 5.
Yep. To the, what is it? Let me see, the Assessment Appeals Board.
Assessment Appeals Board, okay. And I'll second that. All right, any discussion? Right, all those in favor of appointing Mr. Timothy Thomas Sr. from District 5 to the Assessment Appeals Board indicate by raising your hand. Right, vote is unanimous. Oh, I retract. Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. Cato, myself, Mr. Schumake, Mr. Brazel, Mr. Jones is not present for the vote. Okay, any other nominations for appointments?
So I think I would like to nominate Mr. Terry Bullard. Is he in the packet?
He is, the very first one. I would second, sorry. I would second that.
I'm on the wrong packet. Terry Bullard.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and Mr. Schumake with the second. Any discussion?
Met him here recently at Pine Grove Veterans Coffee and Breakfast, and he's just an outstanding guy, really nice guy. Lives out in the country in my district and seems to want to be involved any way he can to help. So, you know, I think it would be a good place for him to start.
Awesome. Right, all those in favor of Mr. Terry L. Bullard, Brigadier General Retired, nomination to the Assessment Appeals Board, indicate by raising your hand. Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. Cato, myself, Mr. Schumake, and Mr. Brazel. Mr. Jones is absent for this vote. Right, any other?
Well, I see, there's one, since we have multiple vacancies on this board, I understand it's Mr. Tucker's district, and I would certainly, you know, swap with him if he has an issue. But I know Mr. Moore does a lot of great work for us. I assume, Mr. DeBose, there's no problem with a county employee serving on a board of commission, correct?
You don't want that.
Yeah, I think it would depend on what their job duties are, but I would have to look into that.
Well, just table that, then.
We've never done that. We've never done it, and I don't think it's appropriate.
Well, I was just noticing that, that he also, and he may be part-time, but let's table that till we can clear that up, then. I don't want to create something bad for us, bad situation for him or us.
And we appointed Mr. Thomas Sr. already. Okay, so that concludes our applicants for that. So we still have three vacancies. Right, so if there's any citizen, if there are any citizens that would like to serve on the Assessment Appeals Board, there are still three vacancies, and we will check on the employee that applied. All right, item number 13, council briefings. Mr. Brazel, can you start tonight?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I think it's been a great meeting, a lot of debate. We finished up some things that we've been working on for quite some time. I think tonight, I'd like to dispel a rumor. I've had intentions to run for Senate, and the word's gotten around. I have not made an official announcement, but as much fun as I'm having with you guys, I think I'm going to be here for a very long time. So Mr. Jones and I have become quite good friends. Derek Brant, Danny, Katie, really enjoy working with you all. And at this time, my family is more important, my time with my family and my time with our expanding businesses is more important than me trying to move ahead politically. So really appreciate the conversations that we've had, but I just wanted to clear that up, make that clear tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Schumake?
Yep. So a couple of things. First off, Senate's loss, but our gain, so I'm selfishly happy to have you stick around. So, thanks.
Thank you.
So I want to, as we mentioned earlier, our local mayors are here. I see Mayor Emmons is out there. These are much longer than what you guys do, so thank you for sticking with us. So because, given that Mayor Emmons is here, let me start here. November 30th is the Elgin Tree Lighting. If you have not been, it's pretty amazing. It's Radiate Church, and who else, Mayor? So it's a really great event. They have a stage, they have the kids come out. My kid, both of my children were in choir at Dobie's Mill. They have the Dobie's Mill and the Blaine Allen Running School choirs coming, singing Christmas carols. It's really awesome. It's a great event down at the park, so I encourage everyone to go, November 30th. It's 6 o'clock, is that right, Mayor? 6 o'clock, the November 30th Tree Lighting in Elgin. Also, of course, December 2nd is the famous Catfish Stomp, so hopefully you guys can make that as well, the first Saturday in December, as it always is. And also, the town of Elgin is rapidly approaching construction on their, on the, in that little facility inside the park. So it's going to be a great place, because right now in Elgin, there really isn't a great venue, if you want to have something that's kind of official. You know, we've done the town halls over there, and the churches have been wonderful out there, but it'll be really great to have a venue that we can use for things just like that. The town hall itself is relatively small, so this will be fantastic. So again, thank you, Mayor Emmons, appreciate it. Oh, one last point I'd like to congratulate, he was already congratulating, the Elgin Town Council meeting, but Krista Long, the Optimist Club, Mr. Jones and the Optimist Club named him Police Officer of the Year for Elgin, Krista Long, who also recently got promoted to sergeant. And Councilman Jones gave me the honor of presenting that to him over at the Town Council meeting. So thank you. Also, going to want to send thanks to United Way, Four West Watery and Blanketing Families for, one, suggesting the idea of the proclamation, and also the amazing work they do for our community. And, you know, Mr. Webb spoke earlier today, and I always love to hear him speak, and he talked about stopping the developments. The feasibility of that and the legality of that is tough, but every single person up here is super mindful of the growth issue. I think that in January, you're going to see some motion on some of those things. I know I've talked to a lot of you up here, and that trip was really illuminating as well, but I think you're going to see a lot of movement in January and into February on some of those growth issues, or at least that's what I hope to put forward. And the last thing I want to say is, I want to thank just kind of everybody up here. You know, a special sort of shout-out to you, Councilman Jones. So obviously, we disagree on this recreation issue, and that's okay. But over the time that I've been here on council, this entire body has developed a way to disagree without being disagreeable. And I have never felt like, you know, my opinion was somehow belittled or my thoughts were belittled by you, Councilman Jones, or anybody else. And so it's been a place where we can have these robust discussions, but also come right back together on the things we care about. And something we talked about on the trip to Aiken is, as a body, the things that are bringing us together is far, far greater with the challenges we face in this county than what's dividing us. So I look forward to moving forward into the new year. And the last thing I'll say, I know we have one more, I guess, before Thanksgiving or I guess before Thanksgiving or after? It's after, right? Yeah, after. So let me just say I'm very thanks, very thankful to serve with all of you up here. And thank you, guys, for all the support you've given me. That's all I have.
Mr. Cato?
I have several things, unfortunately. I know y'all don't want to hear me talk. But first of all, on December the 2nd, they're having a Christmas craft show, so to speak, at the Mount Pisgah Resource Center. If you want to sell some craft items or Christmas items, it's $25 a spot. I think that we may even have a dedication to the mural that's being placed up at Mount Pisgah Resource. So I invite everyone to go out there. That time is from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on December the 2nd. And you can contact the Resource Center, Jeanette Fale or Kathy Siggers, if you're interested in that. Also, the Town of Bethune is partnering with the United Way to adopt a local family. You can contact the Bethune Town Hall for more information on that. They will have an angel tree for gift purchases for those in need. If you need any information for that, you can also contact the Town Hall. I want to thank the Bethune Town Mayor, Ms. Holly, for being here tonight and being present here at the council meeting and sticking with us through this lengthy meeting. I want to congratulate a few people. You know, I'm a big sports fan, but I think sometimes that it does, it does these coaches and does these kids good to hear their names and their teams mentioned at County Council. And I was hoping to do it a little bit different way, but I'm going to do it this way tonight. But first, I want to start with the North Central Band. And we don't talk about bands up here very much, but I want to send a congratulations to the North Central Band. They placed third in the state, and they were the bronze medalists. And that says a lot. People don't give these bands credit enough. If you've ever been by that school up there, Camden or Lugoff, any of them, and you see them out there marching and practicing in the summer heat, when the football players are practicing, they're out there too. And so I want to give them a shout-out on their third-place finish in the state. North Central Volleyball, I want to say a little something about that. They finished lower state runner-up. Andy Johnson does a phenomenal job with North Central Volleyball. He has won the region, and I wanted to get the total number, but I know it's been several years straight. He has won the region. And played for the state, been to lower state multiple, multiple times. He has an outstanding program up there. He and Nikki Ganey and then Coach Holly on the JV and my daughter Summer on the JV. They build a phenomenal program. So I want to give him a shout-out. He's been with them for a while. Andy Johnson is just an absolute phenomenal person. North Central Football, first-year coach Daniel Sykes, who's from right here around Camden. They went to the playoffs this year. Camden Volleyball, they finished as state runner-up this year. Congratulations to them. I mean, you just don't know what kind of work goes into these kids doing what they do. And Camden Football's still in the state playoffs. I'll finish up with this. I want to concur on what some of my colleagues have said about the way this council works. You know, we can sit up here, we can debate, we can talk, we can look like we get frustrated, and sometimes we do. But it's all part of business. And each and every person that sits behind this counter is doing what they think's best for Kershaw County. They're not doing anything whatsoever that they think would be against Kershaw County, whether they agree with each other or not. Nobody up here is ever going to, and I've said this and I'll say it again before I'm done, but nobody up here is going to ever make everybody happy. You're always going to have one half that wants one thing and the other half that wants the other. We have to make the best decisions off the knowledge that we, that we have. And with that said, I'm not going, I'm not going to say much more on that. I'm going to say this. We're approaching a time of the year that we need to be thankful. We, we can look around us and always see that there's other people that's in much more need than we are. We can be thankful for our health, we can be thankful for our family, we can be thankful for our colleagues. But just be thankful, be thankful. There's so much going on in this world today. Be thankful for what we have. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Mr. Tomlinson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's tough to follow up, Councilman Cato. Thank you for your, your kind words. That was a lot you had written down right there. I really appreciate my colleagues being here, appreciate the conversation. I thought everything was good. Councilman Jones, I, I love your passion. I do. It's something that is admired by all and appreciate everything that you do for this county and everything you continue to do. Russell, I'm glad you're going to be here with us for a while. That's exciting. And get to look at your good-looking face for a little bit longer.
Yes, you do.
There you go. On another note, I would like to, Reverend Charlie Thomas, provided our vacation, thank you for being here. It's good to see you. I had the opportunity to sit down with Reverend Thomas, who is with Unity United Methodist Church over in Lugoff. He is going to do wonderful things for this community. I appreciate all you do, appreciate you being here tonight. Mr. Jack Carrington, who, what is that, number four boy? Yeah, just had baby boy number four. Congratulations on that. I know that you're getting grayer like me, so before long, we might be like Mr. Jones over there and be about how bald. And then lastly, if y'all happen to see my wife tomorrow, it is her, as she would say, 23rd and Holden birthday. So please wish her a happy birthday tomorrow. And that is why I'm getting gray. But that, that is all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the County Council. I do have a couple of things I want to just mention tonight. Russell, I think you made the right decision. You put family first, before ego, before ambition. And I'm glad you made that decision.
Thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome. And Derek Schumake, we did have a great time going to that meeting. We do disagree at times, but you have always been respectful to me, and you never have been, you've never tried to dismiss me, you've never tried to disrespect me, and I appreciate that. And I hope I haven't done that to y'all, but I'm going to stand my ground on the things that I think are important. And Danny Cato, appreciate all you do. And I am going to thank each and every one of you. And Brant, you as well, too. I call Brant the frat boy. He does pretty good, you know. But I do want to say something, and it's important to me to make sure that I get this out correctly. You know, this is the County Council's meeting. We have rules. We run this meeting. And I'm just thankful that we have Craig Hudson in here, who has always done, known him many years. And he knows what he's doing. He may not do it as fast as we think y'all do it sometimes, but he knows what he's doing. And, and thank you to you, too. We've got one of the best chairs departments in the state of South Carolina. And I'm very proud. We may have misunderstandings, but what I do want to, Madam Chair, is when people are leaving, because I'm hard of hearing sometimes, when people are leaving, if you were just kind of, and this has been done in the past, and I know you remember it, the chair would say, could we just wait a second, let everybody kind of get out of the room so we can hear what's going on? But I didn't get my way tonight, but I'm used to that. But I respect the process. And the process was done tonight. And also, I don't know how, I know that Veterans Day has passed, but I want to say to Derek Schumake, thank you for serving our country. I saw all those Marine posts of you with a small little tummy. I couldn't put anything myself on the Facebook because he had all the time taken up. But anyway, and I truly mean that, and any other veteran, you're a veteran, aren't you? Well, thank you as well, too.
Air Force.
Air Force. But I do want to say, too, to Madam Katie Gwynne, combat veteran. And for a female, they have to work, I was in the Army, guys. I know how females, how hard it is for them in the military. But we have a combat veteran here. She's done a good job. And I think this council, we don't agree with her all the time. And I'm not going to agree with her all the time, but bottom line is, I'm going to respect her and respect the process that we have. It's all we've got, folks. This is all we've got. We can't, we can't let things, we can't let meetings be taken over. We've got to have rules, we've got to have regulations. And you hold it very well. But having said that, I think that ends it for me. But thank you very much, and to the people of Kershaw County, I appreciate the fact that you've given me 17 years. And I got three more. Counting down the days. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Still don't agree with you, says you're not on the baseball field.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, Happy Veterans Day, Mr. Schumake, Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. Jones. Appreciate your service, thank you very much. Reverend Thomas, I'm so sorry I didn't see you in the very beginning. Thank you for sticking it out with us. Continue to pray for us. If you'll make that your mission until the next meeting, to pray for the decisions that are made in this room and everything this council does in between meetings. Green Hill Baptist Church is celebrating their 161st birthday coming up. They will have a celebration November 26th at 3:00 p.m. This is, I think it's a Saturday after Thanksgiving. And I just found out they're not the oldest church in Kershaw County, but they're the second-oldest church. So please go support them. The Concerned Clergy of Kershaw County, they meet, this is clergy from all over Kershaw County, they meet the second Monday of every month. Pastor Marion Bennett is the president of that group. They are looking for more involvement, more pastors, more reverence, and more clergy to join their group. I went to their meeting this past week, and we had a really great discussion on diversity of housing and needs in Kershaw County. And what was very interesting, these pastors are from all over the county in very different areas of the county, some in high-density areas, some in rural. But the needs of the people were still the same. So if you're in the clergy community, that would be a great way to serve by joining that group. And then I also asked them to let us know the issues that come up in their meetings, to let us know how we can make a difference here as policymakers. As long, with that, the diversity of housing, this has come up several times and I've had some phone calls as we go into approving our comprehensive plan and our new planning and zoning codes. I would ask this council to please consider some of the Planning Commission's recommendations of requiring developments to have more diversity of housing. So instead of a development that's all single-family, a development that is some single-family, some townhomes, some apartments, with parks and sidewalks all worked into the development. It kind of goes along with the planned development, but what we've seen is just single-family housing. So diversity of housing in Kershaw County is really needed. It's not a one-size-fits-all for our citizens. All right, the Holiday Market for the Kershaw County Arts Center is November 30th through December 10th. Arts Center also has Elf the Musical coming up and Charlie Brown Christmas, December 7th. Elf the Musical will be December 1st through 3rd and 8th through 10th. And I'll remind you guys of the December meeting. And we also want to congratulate Coach Brazel and Coach Allen. They are the third, for the third year in row, their young ladies at Thomas Sumter Academy, varsity cheer, have won state champions, and I'm really proud of them. We have a lot of Kershaw County residents that go to that school. And then the head coach is also a Kershaw County resident.
That would be my sister-in-law.
Mr. Brazel's sister-in-law, and also Mr. Brazel's daughter. Congratulations to her, her team won state champions in their division. All right, that's all I got. Mr. Templar, you are next. And what I didn't get to cover was the bridge, Highway 1 Bridge and I-20 Bridge. So if you'll cover that for me also, real quick. Yes, he's got the burials on his list, but the bridges were not.
First, I want to start off with some, just an ability or great opportunity to brag on our EMS. Paramedic Danya Erby and Paramedic Scott Dunham represented Kershaw County EMS in the 26th Annual Carolina Competition at the Symposium in Hartsville over the weekend, the 3rd and the 4th of November. And they ended up taking first place. So they'll go on to the state finals to be held in Myrtle Beach in March as part of the South Carolina EMS Association Symposium. So we tend to get doe-eyed with cops thinking that they're the only facet to public safety. But these people are out here, our EMS is running over 1,000 calls a month now. And that is just an incredible workload on them. And they truly are saving lives. So I just wanted to take a minute to brag on them. So congratulations, Danya and Scott. Job well done, and best of luck in March. I'm not going to go in order here because I'm going to need John to help me out on this stuff. So Boat Ramp update, we've got a meeting Thursday morning at 9:00 with Andy Wicker, the DNR engineer, on-site over there at the boat landing, Patriots Landing. He's going to assist us with placement and location. DNR, I'm sorry, DOT will be over there as well. Bridge engineer and their permit engineer will be over there. This is not just something where we throw some concrete down and throw a dock in the water. There's a lot going on with this. So there's a lot of moving parts. One of my concerns on this project is the fact that the, the bridge over US 1 needs some emergency repairs. I'm hoping that this won't end up being a concurrent project. I'm a little concerned about if, if that boat landing area will become a, some sort of lay-down area of some sort. I don't know. We'll, we'll know more and brief accordingly as, as we get that information. But ultimately, that is a DOT right away, and that bridge repair is going to take precedence over anything we want to construct under there. So, well, I, I'm excited about the amount of people that are coming over there Thursday morning at 9:00. So that's, that's a pretty good buy-in from DOT and DNR as well. After that, we will, we will assemble our, our project plan, and then we will submit it to the state for the funding. So that's kind of where we stand on that. Match Board update, we are at the point now where we can submit and go ahead and get that moving on. We had to essentially clean up our data. Our boards were kind of in disarray, so we had to make sure that those were all accurate and tidied up. Ms. Hannah's done an amazing job on that. So now we feel our data is good. Ms. Hannah's done an amazing job on that, so now we feel our data is good. We don't want to submit garbage, so there are some vacancies on there, but that's kind of what matchboard will be for, is to help fill those vacancies or advertise those vacancies. But everybody that is on these, these boards are, everything's correct, everything's in order and everything is reflective, so now we're confident. So there'll be probably a two-week turnaround on that with some uploading as, as they go ahead, will proof what they, the work they have done. So two, three weeks somewhere in there.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm.
And with the holidays coming up, I know that will add some days. Do you think we can have this rolling by the first of the year?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. We'll get rolling on that ASAP.
Okay.
And the Camden burial, John and I have been working on this, more so John with the FOIA items and the two attorneys involved for the, the, it was the Historic Camden and the other entity, I'm drawing a blank on, but unfortunately, that individual for the.
Battlefield Trust.
Battlefield Trust, I'm sorry, thank you. He was sick, as I reported one time. Ultimately, he passed away unfortunately, and he was kind of a, a one-man shop, if you will. So a lot of that information rested with him and, and his files and things like that. I think he worked out of his house. We have been in contact with his attorney, but with, with his untimely passing, I don't know how much more information we will be able to, to pull from that even.
Okay.
With the, the FOIA. So John has received information as, as late as this week, so I'll just pass it over to him to.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we did receive fairly large production from Historic Camden. It's various documents, a large box that will require some review to really further brief you. I will say that foremost in some of those communications, and again, they were, this was a longstanding project with a lot of logistics, but there are communications that Historic Camden had copies of from Department of Army to Doug Bostic, who is Battlefield Trust, confirming that the Army approved of all the ceremonial aspects, the Battle of Camden process, but that the Army took custody of the remains of these fallen soldiers after that ceremony and event, and that custody remained with them. The Army, in fact, in that letter, directed that those remains be interred at Quaker Cemetery at a private ceremony. You know, outside of those communications, again, we have not dug into the voluminous box of information, but it, it does appear that the Army was, again, directing the final resting place and final interment of those soldiers, and again, directed that it be a non-public event per their directives to maintain the sanctity of, of that interment process.
Okay, do we have dates?
Um, I believe.
Because I think that was the main.
I believe that letter.
Question at hand.
From July 17. I believe notice of the actual interment was only provided, I believe, four days prior to the interment occurring. But again, I can pour through there and provide some follow-up briefing.
Okay.
Yeah, luminous production.
Are we ready to brief back to council, kind of the timeline and everything that was discovered?
Yeah, I think, I think I could certainly brief y'all at the next council meeting, kind of a timeline, yes.
Ms. Hannah, will you note that, please? Thank you.
Madam Chair, back to the two items you had asked me about, US-1 and I-20. We have a flyer that I will pin to the county website as a resource for the I-20 bridge construction. It has some dates, I don't have it with me, but we will look to make that available. I'm sure it's available somewhere on, on DOT's website as well, but we can certainly make it available on our website as it's going to greatly impact citizens of Kershaw County. US-1, it, it remains in its current status of awaiting design concepts and things like that, as, as in my last conversation with DOT this afternoon. Ultimately, the, there was some separation from one of the supports from the main deck, about two inches. That has been shored up, that was a bulk of the work that the citizens had seen going on over there on the bridge underneath with steel support beams. The, the bridge is good for traffic in both lanes, but as a precautionary measure, they are keeping the weight and the traffic to the right lane coming into Camden. They are under their emergency procurement operations right now. They are looking for a, a contractor to carry out that work, but that work ultimately has to be blessed by the governor. It, it doesn't sound as emergency and expeditious as we would think, but.
Well, they should drive down Highway 1.
Yes.
Headed east.
Yes.
About 4 o'clock.
Yeah. So it, it, it does require some, some planning if, if you commute back and forth every day, but I would think at this point, by, by now, it's been closed for, that lane's been closed for so long. People have unfortunately gotten used to it. I've heard some dates thrown out there, but DOT didn't have, they didn't confirm any dates and.
I think the main question I've fielded, I don't know about my colleagues, is what was going on, because they see that the lane is closed, but there's no work going on.
Right.
So that answers the question. It's a precautionary measure on the separation. And I understand I-20 Bridge will also be under construction simultaneously, but not in the same direction.
Correct.
Okay.
Take I-20 east.
Right.
And, and Highway 1 west.
Right. And I know this doesn't directly involve us here, but if you'll just keep us.
Sure.
Updated so that, from DOT, so that we can tell the citizens when they have questions about what's going on and which way.
Um, and that is important. Does anyone have any questions for me?
No, sir.
No questions.
Right, Mr. DeBose.
I have.
Okay. All right, future agenda items, Clean Community Commission, we have one vacancy and it is the City of Camden's appointment. So we will reach out to the City of Camden and see if they have made a decision on who they would like to appoint in that seat, but look for that in the future agenda item. If you live within the City of Camden, you're interested in that, please contact City Council so that you can be their appointment or their appointee. We did strike 17 personnel matter, but at this time, I make a motion that we enter executive session for a brief legal concern. It would be counsel, the attorney, Mr. Templar, and if Gerald's still here, Mr. Blanchard. Is there a second?
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Schumacher, second. All those in favor of entering executive session indicate by raising your hand. Right vote is unanimous, we're now in executive session.
Good seeing Judge Todd out here tonight, too.